Oh, good after— oh, here's the Mayor Pro Tem. Good afternoon, I'd like to call the meeting to order of the May 28, 2019 study session. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Just in the nick of time. Current business, first item, let's clarify any items, questions anyone might have on the consent calendar, Mr. Avery. Mr. Duffield.
I have none.
Mr. Walden?
I have a bunch of questions, actually. Guess we can do it now, item four. Simone?
Good afternoon.
Afternoon. May I?
Yes, go please, go ahead.
So, this item, I think, is setting up a future item, correct?
That is correct.
Could you explain this item to me in layman terms?
Sure, so, the last time we were in front of city council, I want to say it was probably a month ago, council directed staff to do two things, to restrict construction on Saturdays, and to ensure there's at least— I'm sorry, I got it wrong. This is the— I was quoting number three. Number four, the feedback that we got from council was, right now, for zones property that you can build a multifamily structure, what we're seeing is some people have purchased multifamily properties that are zone RM, and they're building a single-family dwelling, or even a duplex. But the design standards are different between the multifamily and the single-family. In a sense, if you build a single-family in a multifamily zone, you actually can big— build the house bigger than a traditional single-family zone. So because of that RM zone designation, your heights are actually different, and they're actually taller. So you can build an actually bigger home. So this item is requesting from city council, if you'd like for us to go back and change the code, so if you build a single-family home, you just build towards single-family standards, no matter what zone you're in.
Do you have any idea how many potential homes they built in the future this would affect?
I don't have that number available in front of me right now, but that's something probably I can go back and dig up before the council hearing.
Could you make even a guess, or is it too tough to do?
I want to say it's probably about 100.
About 100. And these zones are mostly in District 1?
We have, and we're going to ask Deputy Director Jim Campbell if he's— oh, there's— how many is it in all districts?
This would affect all.
So there's District 1, District 4, and District 5.
So I received an email that one individual at least was concerned that their neighbors had already done this, and this has taken away an opportunity for them to do the same. Did you see that, receive that email?
I did.
Would that be considered in the staff report for us to vote on at later date? Will you present that information to us, for us to consider?
There'll definitely be public outreach on this item. This is just an initiation to change the code. This is not changing the code at all. So I think from a staff standpoint, we have a lot of work to do. We did see that email as far as, you know, that some individual thinks that they are not going to get the same property right as their neighbor. We need to go back and verify from a code standpoint, what's the allowable floor area? Can you fit that floor area in kind of in a smaller box versus a bigger box? And I think there's a lot of work from a staff standpoint to do on that. So, I just don't have all the answers right now.
All right, well, I appreciate it. I wanted to pull aside and ask those questions. There's more work to be done, and you fully acknowledge that and propose that as well. It's not a study session, but I feel myself actually leaning towards not supporting this item down the road because of the concerns I've heard from that one individual, which I imagine is going to be numerous cases. But if we can find a way to alleviate or address those concerns in a way that still protects their property rights, I'd be open to— to it. So just so we're clear, though, a vote today to move this item forward is essentially a vote, like a study session, to indicate that more time, staff time and energy can put forth, but not that an ordinance or any changes will be passed.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Brenner?
I believe, was that place that we looked at in the 300 block on Marguerite, an example of this, is the one that— remember the big white one there that we looked at last time that seemed to be so much larger? And it turned out, was that one of the examples of this?
That's absolutely correct.
So my question would be, if we don't allow them to turn it into either a duplex or a single-family, they could still keep their designation and turn it, keep the size, but turn it into a multi— it would almost encourage them to make it a multifamily unit and keep the same bulk and size, is that correct?
That's correct. We don't have a minimum unit count, so if somebody bought a property that is zoned for multifamily, per our zoning code, they're allowed to build single-family. So that's one option, this is take away that allowance to build a single-family or duplex. In a sense, you force them to build multifamily.
Yeah, which I'd almost rather encourage them to build a duplex or a single-family rather than three units on a property like that. So we might—it might be an unintended consequence that if we pass this regulation, we're encouraging more units on one of those small lots.
Right now, there's— there—a property owner has an option. They're not being forced to do anything.
Right. It does need more— more discussion, so. And also, on item—the one before that, item three, is that the same—that we will be coming back and discussing that in more depth, the Saturday ban, or?
So, item number three, Councilmember, this is actually the ordinance. This is the introduction to the ordinance. So, it's different than item four, which is just—it's asking council to change. This is actually the change. And if you would like us to before— if the council would like us to before on that, then we would come back with a final adjop at the next council meeting, or if you see it's fit to make some changes to the ordinance. But this is actually the ordinance.
Okay. I would like that one polled when we talk about that.
We'll do that when we come back to the regular session. Mr. Hurdman?
I'm fine.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I'll read briefly. On item 10, no staff, this is specific to the clerk and city attorney. One of the things that Mr. Moser brought up in his notes was the idea of, we have the contracts online and available, and he was asking about letter proposals as well. This is actually something that I had asked our clerk and city attorney to look into in the last few weeks, and if we had the ability to put— I mean, it doesn't have to be every single one, because some of them are doors and very small amounts. But if we had it over a certain amount—I can't remember the number we had talked about, but it's—it would be a relatively small number, and I think that that would actually make a lot of sense for these consulting agreements. Just as a frame of reference for my fellow councilmembers, we're talking about these large consulting agreements that we approve in advance, and then they submit letter proposals for the actual work. Sometimes it's as little as $20, and sometimes as much as, well, 100— over $100,000. So if it's a large amount, I would—I do think it makes sense to have the letter proposals put up on the website. So I was kind of curious about what dollar amount you think is a good threshold for us to be able to do that efficiently.
So we're thinking, in order to be more transparent about putting those letter proposals online, and kind of the number we had been kicking around was $10,000. If it was over $10,000, then the letter proposal would go online as well.
Yeah, I mean, is that—is that pretty doable, Leilani? Yes, okay. Can make it work. I do think that that ought to be something we bring forward, and if it's—and it doesn't— since it's not specific to this action, maybe it's something to be—to bring forward again as maybe a council— council policy change. I would like to make sure that we're—you know, it makes sense for within the departments as well, but it does make sense. So I would like to just bring that back at some point down the road, when you've had a little bit of time to think about it, on how to be more transparent on the— on the letter proposal side. Thanks.
And I have none. All right, let's proceed in study session item number two, the review of the proposed fiscal year 2019-20 capital improvement program. Mr. Webb?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor. Councilmembers, thank you for your attention today. It's kind of exciting. I was just thinking how fast this came around from last year. But we are here today to talk about the proposed capital improvement program for the city. Before we get going, I want to let me make sure that I introduce Mike Sinicori, our acting city engineer here. And also on my side is Jamie Copeland, she's our finance and administrative manager, and really kind of the horsepower being putting this document together. I also want to take the opportunity to thank Jamie, because she's also advised me that she's going to retire as of July. So she's put in 13 and a half years on this document, runs this program, and has done a great job, and I thank you for all your effort.
I'll thank you.
Before we get rolling here, what we discussed is having the council disclose whether they have conflicts. So we're going to do all the disclosures here at the beginning, and then if the council wants us to discuss a particular item where a council member has a conflict, then you'll get up and leave for that portion of the discussion. But Dave's going to go through and not talk about every project that's on his slide, so it'd only be if we're going to actually have a discussion on one of those projects. So, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you, and maybe we can start with Councilmember Avery, if he has any conflicts he'd like to disclose.
I probably got a few, do I have? Yeah, okay.
Mr. Duffield, do you have any conflicts? Okay. All right, good.
I have a few, and have the advantage of looking at Mr. Harp's email, poor Duffy. It's in front of me, so I'm saying I'm able to read it, because I've got a couple. I have a conflict on all assessment district matters related to my employment with Telcom, as well as Rule 20A undergrounding credit purchases for the same reason. And then a previous recusal lodged for West Coast Highway Medium Landscaping Phase 3, and Streetlight Rehabilitation Program. I think I have a conflict due to personal property residence within the area of where I live. And then advanced meter infrastructure, my conflict's related to the use of licensed spectrum for telecommunications. And Grant Howard Park rehabilitation is related to, I believe, telecommunication devices placed on city infrastructure. And then slurry seal fiscal year 18 is related to the location of the project in East Bluff near my residence, where I have real property.
Wow. And Mr. Duffield?
I have a conflict on Mariners Mile parking study, because I have my business in Mariners Mile.
Okay.
Councilmember Avery has—
Oh, Mr. Avery.
I've got a couple.
Oh, okay, come, let's hear it.
I have a conflict, Babo Island Crosswalks Improvement Phase 2, and Babo Boulevard Pedestrian Crossing is Phase 2, have real property interest. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Brenner?
Erin, I'm going to rely on you. I have the West Coast Medium Landscaping, I believe, and the Grant Howard Park, are those my two?
We also had Marguerite Avenue pavement listed as well, but I think it's all based on real property or source of income.
Okay. Mr. Hurdman?
Mine are all based on real property interests. I'm not sure about this one, Bayside Drive pavement rehab, definitely Marine Avenue Reconstruction, Babo Island enhancements, Bay and Beach sand management was not included, Erin, on your list, but I'm going to include it, Grand Canal dredging, the Babo Island swim platforms, Fire Station Number 4 in Babo Island Water Main replacement project, quite a few.
Mayor Pro Tem?
As the member of District 7, I have none.
And as a member of District 1, I have none. This all confirms my theory that if you're going to be a city council person in Newport Beach, you should live in Rancho Cucamonga. That might conflict with our charter, though. All right, Mr. Webb, it's all yours.
Yes, and thank you. And to that same issue on the conflicts, we have a lot of work going all over town, except obviously up in Mr. O'Neill's district week, we have some projects for him to. Why don't we jump right into this? This is actually a very great topic, but I want to start for the audience and people watching, just to understand what the capital improvement program is. This program sets our priorities and appropriates funds for the next year, provides a basis of project planning, and helps identify the potential conflicts in our projects. It develops and constructs and identified public improvements, addresses significant maintenance projects within the CIP, and it also responds to changing priorities and conditions. And again, it evolves as the community does, and the council's private does, and we change the CIP to match that. So, excuse me, maybe start our program here, do a little recap of the current year. It's always nice to look back before we look forward. We wanted to report back to you today about the current CIP projects and how that's going along. Today, and as of come June 30, we're projecting out, we will have delivered 31 major capital improvement projects, the current program, with value of about $36.1 million. And that value changes, as you know, because I put a little box in the corner there about projects, maybe make— just make the line or don't. We have three big projects out there right now that we're going to basically deliver in probably July, which is our fire station library, the Grand Canal, which is mostly done, we have a little catch-up on that, and a large assessment district, 117 and Cronomar. So that 36.1 could easily be 47, 48, it just depends where the calendar year falls. This is just a summary of a lot of projects that we've done this year. If you have any interest in any of these, we can answer questions. I wasn't going to stop on this, but just kind of show the audience and yourself a lot of the major projects. You've seen these around your neighborhoods, and as you drive the city over the year. And then we have a lot of things in construction still, and these are lists of the major projects in construction. Again, notice the fire station in there, some Bayview Heights, we have city painting facilities, MacArthur and Jamboree just about to start paving. And we're happy to answer any questions on these, if you should have some after the presentation ends. Some assessment district projects that we have coming up, 117 I mentioned in Cronomar, we have the big ones down on the Babo Boulevard about to start. This is 116 and Underground District 22 on Babo Boulevard. And then with that, too, we also have a lot of things in design. We're constantly moving things through construction completion, but in design and prep. And these are the projects that's in the design shop right now. You see the Junior Guard Building, we've talked a little bit about, Grant Howard, we just had a discussion on that. Newport Island, we have some work there, waterline crossings, the police station second phase, several fire stations, including the Lido Station we're talking about, and some of the AD districts, all going through the design process. So with that, and if there's any questions in the current, I'll move right into the proposed budget. So our proposed budget, which we'll be talking about, is this document you've seen. This was released in March. This has all the projects in it and all the numbers, so I'm going to forego that unless you'd like some specifics. We're going to talk mainly about the projects and the categories that are going forward. It currently, as printed, has 96 projects in it, programs and various items, about $96.2 million worth, 44.5 is new funding, and 51.7 million is rebudgets. And that rebudget number's come up a couple of times, too. That varies over the years, and people wonder, that's a lot of money moving and staying in the budget. So I gave you an example, and it's in the CIP, you can see where the rebudgets are. But if you look at the little blue table, you see $33 million in rebudgets that are continuing through the calendar year, or I should say the financial calendar year. You've got Lido Station 2 in there, a large project, $9 million. You've got Superior Overcrossings for $5 million. You have several AD districts we've now put in there, $7.5 million. So there's a big number of that, that we just hold the budgets as we go through the design and into the construction phase.
One moment, please, we have a question. Mayor Pro Tem?
So I do recognize that the very end of the presentation, you've got a slide that shows that this is not all general fund money, but would you mind just briefly touching on the fact that this comes from quite a few different fund sources?
Thank you.
Absolutely. The general fund covers a small portion of capital improvement projects, but a lot of it comes from entitlement funds, from specific funds like gas tax, Measure M, SB1. We have water and sewer funds in here. Assessment districts are resident-driven, they put their— about $7.5 million, a lot of that's residential money coming into it. And we'll show you that at the very end, how that's funding lays out. That was a good point.
I have a quick question on that. $51.7 million rebudgets, how does that compare to prior years?
It varies. I don't recall last year, but our rebudget last year, maybe Jamie could look that up for me, probably about 40, 41 comes to mind. It does vary, some years it's lower, some—but the other thing on this is the total budget, the 96 million is very high. Last year was 77 million. So it goes along with the growth.
So that was going to be my next question. So how does that compare—I don't remember, as long as I've been on the council, it's typically been 70 or 80, or 60?
Well, I'm sorry, can I get your question again? I was—
Well, I'm just trying to compare trend data and the carryforward, the total budget of 96.2 of the carryforwards, how does that compare to prior year? The total projects that your Public Works Department is working on?
This is a higher-than-normal budget. It has been growing. I was pointing out, Jamie, you mentioned last year we had $30 million in rebudgets. I do have a slide I can show you if you'd like, that shows kind of a projection over multiple years of how it's grown. And I have that at the end, if you'd like to look at that on a trending basis, but this is a very large year.
I would like to see that at the end. Also contributing to the carryover, anecdotally, what is related to—I know your department's been understaffed— related to being understaffed and projects not being fulfilled?
Well, I think we're leading to, yes, we have some staffing challenges right now. We're kind of in a rebuilding phase, as you know. Our city engineer, Mark Vokoevich, is now running another department, we're looking at that position right now. We've lost a couple key engineers, Fong C just left us. We have a couple inspector positions open, various levels. So we are working on rebuilding that staff, and some of that's going to take some time to up and train those staff. We are still delivering a very high level of projects, I believe, and trying to keep up with council priorities on that.
Well, I appreciate that. And believe me, my question is not based in a critical fashion, as much as just recognizing that—I think all departments are extremely stressed with heavy demands, and to maintain service levels, community development, public works. I see that, I'm observing that, maybe perhaps others have too. Is there any risk going forward? I mean, in terms of balancing this? I mean, you've got nearly $100 million project budget here.
There are risks. We have staffing challenges as one of those, and again, we're working on those. Several of the projects are heavily involve a lot of community work, and that always helps to either expedite a delay or change directions on projects, so there's community risk in there. Several of these projects are regulatory-driven, like the harbor we're working on and some of our environmental programs, so you have regulatory risk that can severely delay a project due to permitting or redirection from the Coast Commission, or the Fish and Wildlife, something like that. And there are some just level bread and butter projects in here, that the pavement jobs and things are more seasonal, trying to work around our tourist season in the summer. There are small risks in those. Those funding sources, though, are pretty set. We pretty much know how much SB1 and gas tax and Measure M we're going to get every year, so that risk isn't so much a factor in those.
Well, all right, I just—it's a big budget for your department to be handling. I just want to make sure that we're scheduling all these things appropriately. Okay, please proceed.
So with that, just thinking about your council priorities that you've given us, this is some of the list that—we're looking at rehabilitating our aging infrastructure. We're trying to improve our citywide vehicle cycle and pedestrian flow. We're looking to renew and improve our parks and streets and our landscaping. We're improving parks and recreational facilities. We're undergrounding overhead utilities, and we're also making and managing and improving the harbor and Thailand amenities. So as you know, our capital improvement budget is broken down into sections, and I'm going to go through each section. Probably the best way is I'll touch on a few things, but if you have any questions on a section, we'll go through that, and then we can move to the next one. Our first one is facilities, and we're looking to program $15.4 million in the facilities area. And you see the various projects in there, anywhere from remodeling the Big Canyon Buildings up our reservoir, to we have a new central library lecture hall we're talking about. We're talking about a new fueling system out at the corporate yard. It also has several fire stations in there, including a new fire station number two at Lido, and the Junior Guards Building, we spoke with council just recently about, and some more work at our police station. So I wanted to see if there's any questions in regard to this category. Our next area is one of our large areas, is our street and drainage area, $21.2 million being programmed. And I've had them break that down by major categories on the bottom there. We typically have a lot of arterial work, there's also local streets, we have street landscaping and streetlights and slopes, and we have a significant amount of drainage this year. So in our arterial streets, you'll see these various components. Bayside Drive, as you know, is under construction. And just to that point, because this is a document that goes over calendar years, there's still money in this new proposed budget to finish up Bayside Drive, not a lot. When the project's done, that money then will be returned back to the base fund, but we carry it through the year. We have another big project in there, Bison Avenue, we're going to pave the entire length, San Joaquin Hills from Jamboree up to MacArthur. That's starting up. Beneath the Canyon Drive from 73 Freeway all the way over to Jamboree is up for design this year. And then we recently awarded in our starting construction of MacArthur Boulevard, the second phase from Ford Road all the way down to the 73 Freeway, and University from City Limits over to Jamboree. We still have old Newport Boulevard rolled in there, we're still working with Caltrans and trying to figure out how to get that design passed by Caltrans. Any questions in this area? All right, I'm going to move into local streets. This includes alleys, and we have some alley reconstruction in our program this year. Another large project is Cameo Highland Street Rehabilitation. This is just above Cameo Shores, and like we did with Cameo Shores, we need to come in and completely rebuild all the neighborhood streets. So this is about a $3 million project, a large program. We have our concrete replacement program, which moves around the city on a seven-year cycle. And then we have some concrete street reconstructions in central Newport on the peninsula. And then we have Marine Avenue Reconstruction. We have money in here for design and concept, and I can talk about that a little differently. We'll be working with the island a little bit more on what they want to do there, as we refine it a little bit better. Little project in here, neighborhood parking and curb improvements, these are some catchalls if you've kept up with the desire to put more parking spaces up by the Mariners Library, this would cover that. Also some storm drain work on Mesa Drive up in Santa Ana Heights. And then Concrete Boulevard—I'm sorry, Ocean Boulevard Concrete Street Replacement is in the projects. Some overlay work, that one there that says Cal Recycle Grants is just notable, that's $175,000 in grant money we programmed in, is for recycled tires, using that in our asphalt pavement, our rubberized pavement. So we have that money in there, we'll put into the various projects. We have our annual slurry seal program and some street repairs. So, any questions on this one?
May I just ask real quick, where are we on the Ocean Boulevard Concrete Pavement Reconstruction Project?
So we're currently reaching out to the community right now and working on what they might want to do in terms of how to redo Ocean Boulevard, and this is from Golden Rod down to Car Nation. It's a very wide street. Michael Sinicori's been out working with the groups, and we just started talking. They're also talking about maybe a little overlook there, right by the ramp down to Fern— Fernleaf, yeah, Fernleaf's the ramp, so.
Okay, thanks.
We have a lot of landscaping this year for various items. We have Babo Boulevard median improvements. This is the continuation of what we've done on Babo Boulevard, and this takes it from 12th Street all the way down to the Village, looking to do the design this year. We're completing right now Babo Boulevard—I'm sorry, Babo Village Streetscape improvements, and there's just a little money left over carrying over as we complete that project. Landscape enhancements, we have a program that we're funding various small landscape projects, and part of that will go towards some effort we're doing on Newport Island this year. Newport Boulevard Landscape Rehabilitation, we talked about in our goal-setting as we come into the city on Newport Boulevard. And we also put in a project, as we talked about, to do some work on the slopes behind Ace Restaurant in Santa Ana Avenue and Avon. And then we had three series circuits in East Bluff we want to get to in our Streetlight Program. And lastly, we have West Coast Highway Medians, we're continuing on with the next phases of that. We've completed Phase 1, we have two more to go. Any questions here? All right, we're going to move into drainage then. Not a lot in drainage this year, but a lot of work. We're still just starting to get together the Babo Island Master Plan, and we're looking at starting to design and construct pump stations on the island. We also have some citywide storm drain repairs. This is mainly point repairs on our storm drains, particularly our corrugated metal pipes and lining those pipes. And then we also have some money in here for tide valve replacements. We have 97 tide valves, I recall, and we replace a few of those every year.
Can I just ask, on those drains, drainage systems, because it's part of FEMA, or the federal government's resiliency program, are we— do we reach out for federal funds on any of these storm drainage infrastructure-related?
We do look into that, and we've applied in the past for Babo Island particularly, and we haven't been successful. We tried anti-seawalls. We'll need to look into the— maybe the pump stations, if anything qualifies for the FEMA hazard mitigation grants.
Okay, thanks.
So our next category, transportation, $3.7 million in this program. This completes the crosswalk improvements we've been doing on the peninsula. This is Phase 2, excuse me. And we hope to get that done soon. That's in combination with the new fire station. Excuse me.
What is the timing on that? Has that—I know that that has been delayed, so have we—
So we're currently— Mike Sinicori's leading an effort to look at laying out the street improvements in the new signal that'll be on Newport Boulevard and 28th Street, which will support the fire station. We're just getting in the concept now. I've had staff push forward to try to work with the architect to come up and finalize the concepts on the fire station itself, and we hope to be bringing that to you probably midsummer, August, so you could look at that and see if this is the right path. We're probably going to have one more. We had one community meeting, and I think we're going to take it out to your town hall[1772.41] We're probably going to have one more. We had one community meeting. I think we're going to take it out to your town hall next. And let's see if the community has any more comments before we bring it to the full council.
But I thought there were some other structural, physical improvements on the crosswalk.
Well, there are, and part of that is on the corner of Newport Boulevard and Twenty Eighth, where we're going to do some bulbs. That's right where the new signal is going to go.
Okay.
And also on Newport Twenty Six. When we do Twenty Eighth Street, we'll just do Twenty Six at the same time.
Okay, what's that noise? Is anybody moving? Oh, the mics down here. Okay. Highly sensitive. Mine? All right. Okay, thanks. I'll turn my mic off.
So, some more transportation improvements in there, as you see. The other big one in here I'd note is the Ocean Boardwalk and Parking Lot Improvements. This is the combination of looking at maybe possibly splitting the trails from Thirty Second, I'm sorry, Thirty Sixth Street all the way down to Fifteenth Street and look at a better way to maybe get through the McFadden Square area. So, we'll be starting that effort. It's going to be a multi-year effort, but that money's in here too. Any questions in this category? I would note too, by the way, with the trolley started this weekend, we had a great start off. We had some difficult weather. We had rain on Sunday and cool Saturday, but we did have some good ridership on Monday and ridership on the other two days, just as a note.
Just curious about the Dover Shores Traffic Study. Dave, what's that involve?
So, Tony Bryner, Traffic Engineer and Staff, have been meeting with the Dover Shores community for some time. They've been concerned about speeding in their community and cut through traffic. It might lead to some traffic calming. We've had two major meetings with them, and we need to follow up with them on our next meeting. All right, I'm going to move on to parks.
Sorry, just on a quick note on that one, we often have people come and ask us about traffic calming measures. One of the things that it's worth remembering, is it a council policy that, okay, do you remember which one it is?
I don't off the top of my head.
Do you remember?
There's a council policy on traffic calming.
Yeah, just as an FY, we have, we've created a council policy on traffic calming that predated all of us on council right here. But it's in order for folks to initiate the costs of going through staff, there are certain things that we expect from residents when they come and ask us for it. So, if you're ever, and my understanding is the folks in Dover Shores did go through that, that process.
They're going through it now, and they meet certain levels that might warrant traffic calming. And then we'll see what those items are, and if they're acceptable to the community, then we need to fund something if council so chooses.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Well, on that topic, I mentioned this to you earlier today, that there's a story in today's LA Times about SB one funds being used for traffic calming measures, bikeways and other traffic calming. So, I know you know, know that, but just to advise that's a potential source of funds.
Yeah, you could use SB one for complete streets, I believe, and that's, I think, what LA is doing with their money.
But we're using it to actually fix our roads. So, just saying.
So, let's move into parks. Twelve point five million dollars being programmed in this category. And the majority of that is grant and howl, as we had that discussion last time with you, and we're kicking that project off. There's a half million dollar project in there to fix park walls and staircases, I think mainly Cliff Park and Irvine Terrace are probably the two targets this year. We have some money in there for refurbishing playgrounds, and also we have the continuing Superior Avenue Overcrossing Project. I'll move on to next category here. A lot of work in the harbor, ten point seven million dollars being programmed this year. First one category, we're still working on cleaning up the harbor, so we put in additional money for abandoned and surrendered watercraft to remove those. We're currently actively working on the American Legion Bulkhead. We've got a couple swim platforms in there, some Baboa Yacht Basin Maintenance. And I'll note that last project, Bilge Pump Out, we purposely are kind of not dragging our feet, but we think there's a grant opportunity for this. Actually, I'm sorry, that, we're working on that with sewer pump outs that we're looking at maybe getting grant funds. But we are actively working on this. Chris Miller's working on this project to bring it to fruition. Any questions on this slide? So, continuing with harbors, we've got our bulkheads and seawalls we're doing repairs and raising on. This would be around probably the peninsula. We've got some harbor maintenance and minor improvements in there. The pier rehabs are in there. We're talking about doing the Newport Pier, as you know, on the end. We've got major harbor dredging. There's a lot of money in there, four point, I want to say four point eight million dollars being rebudgeted. This is our federal match should we be successful in landing our federal lower harbor dredging. And then at the bottom, I mentioned the sewer lift stations. There is a boating and waterways grant that might come up and might pay for a substantial amount of that. So, we're going to probably hold that project a little bit to see if we can get federal funding. I checked, and the stations are in pretty good shape. We're hoping to replace them this summer. But if we can get through this summer and get them for a lot cheaper, we'll do that. Any questions on harbors and beaches? Okay. Water quality, not a huge program this year. We do have a couple of large ones. We're still completing the Arches Storm Drain Diversion. That's where we're taking the low flow that usually goes right into bay that goes to one of our last posted bacteria spots. We're trying to remove that by doing diversions and taking that water out of the system. Goes over to sanitation district, then goes over to the reclaimed water systems. We have the Newport Bay Water Wheel Projects moving through. And then there is some, some money in there for T M D L compliance. T M D L is Total Maximum Daily Loads. These are regional board requirements on the city, copper, boat paints, we've talked about, trash, fecal, coal, flora, and bacteria, et cetera. Any questions on water quality?
Dave, when do you think the Water Wheel Project would start? Any ideas?
Mike, do you happen to know the schedule on that? I know we're still in the agreement process with the various agencies, so once, that's one of those regulatory things. We don't control the schedules. Once we get those agreements and our partners down, then we can probably start firming up the construction. I know the concept plan's pretty much done. The water quality group has looked at that. It's just a matter of putting the pieces together.
Right, and then could you just remind me, the Arches Storm Drain is, is complete?
It's not complete. We're going through Caltrans permits right now, because it's actually a Caltrans storm drain we're going to be diverting. It comes out of Costa Mesa and upper Newport Mesa.
Right, and now that work has been done, a lot of it, right?
The design work's been done. We haven't started construction yet. Mike, did you want to elaborate on that?
Councilmember Avery, councilmembers, we had a good meeting with Caltrans last week to talk about the design and the challenges and trying to get the Caltrans staff to recognize the, the problems with their own drain polluting our harbor. So, they seem to have gotten on board with helping us through the process and got a sort of a clear direction on what the design is. And this is right at the hook ramps, upright above the A Restaurant area. We're going to grab the drain there. In addition, we're also grabbing a drain off of the Hoag Campus and collecting that and going into the sewer system. I think with the meeting last week, we can get this, you know, out to bid probably in the fall sometime and into construction next January is when we're targeting.
We're actually meeting with Caltrans tomorrow. They're district directors, so maybe we can bring that up. Moving on to our water system, a lot of money going in here. We have eleven point seven million dollars program this coming up year. We have a generator up at the Sixteenth Street Pump Station. You've been keeping up with the advanced metering infrastructure project that utility's doing, and there's about three point three million, I believe, in there for that. Some lift stations, a lot of water main projects. We've done a lot of work on Baboa Island. We have a little bit more to do. So, there's some more money in there. And then we have several big water lines that cross our harbor, and we're going to try to replace those. The design's underway right now. And then just some small money for water valves. I have two slides on water, I believe. We also have another project we're putting in for the Newport Pier area. This would kind of correlate to Underground District One Eleven, which is in the works. We want to get in and do the water lines. In this case, it's a lot of cast iron mains. We're replacing those mains prior to the utility district coming in for that area. And also, we have more transmission valves that we're going to be replacing. You have an item on your agenda tonight to start that project, to award a contract. This will be continuing that. We also have money to start a design of water mains on via Lido Sud and Nord on Lido Island. And then just some other, the water system rehabs, the citywide water main replacements. And then lastly, one of our major wells, we have four, as you know, up in Fountain Valley that service our system. We're going to be taking one of those and rehabilitating it this year.
Wait just a minute, Dave. A question, Mayor Protem.
Kevin, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask about the water that's going to affect the, the undergrounding. So, in terms of timing then, does that, does replacing the cast iron water main cause a delay in the undergrounding effort? Or is it just going to be part of the, the natural sequencing?
Actually, it won't cause a delay if we get the project off. We want to get our lines in before theirs. It's a lot easier to put the utilities on and after we get our water lines in versus us trying to come in after the fact. So, this is being expedited to get in front of that project. I don't know what the schedule is on One Eleven, Mike, if you want to comment on that.
Yeah, Dave's actually hitting the nail on the head. And once you put the underground system in and all the wires that are spaghetti above our water line, we, we don't want to try to do the water line afterwards. This was on our master plan to replace some of these mains, so we were ahead of it a little bit. We should be doing this sometime in the fall, bringing you a contract to award. The AD One Eleven package will go out to bid here in the fall. We just got the final redesign of the Phase Two Baboa and AD One Eleven this morning from Edison. And then we'll be passing that on to AT&amp;T and the other five utility companies to look at to join that design package that we'll be managing. That'll be late fall going out to bid probably, and then hopefully the water work will be done, and then they can come in right behind us. And it'll almost look like a coordinated effort. We're trying.
Almost.
It's a very difficult process with a lot of different parties out there. Ms. Brenner's had some emails recently about the three different entities just right over here. You've got Edison, you've got AT&amp;T, you've got, you know, the people that are putting the wires in. You get some pretty angry people when they can't get out of their, out of their garage. It is a challenge keeping it all going, and we do try to do our best, but expect a call or two, starting probably in July.
Thank you, Mike. Just a note, I'm sorry.
I apologize. What do you mean, starting in July? Are you talking in CDM or are you talking about Baboa?
Baboa Boulevard. We are going to break ground somewhere out there. We're working with the contractor to figure out exactly where. And even as we start touching the community and talking to the proponents, we're already getting some pushback from, from the community saying, gosh, can, can we wait till after summer? And couldn't you go over there or go somewhere else? And it's all through that Phase One area that you've already awarded back in April. And we're still trying to figure out exactly where to start, and it probably is going to wait till after the parade and, and start in July. And most of the folks that live over there, or half of them are tenants. They're not, they're not property owners as they are in Coronetamar. There's more property owners there, so patients might, might not be there on Baboa Boulevard.
And so, the, so we're going to start the water main replacement. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I'm now misunderstanding the, the sequencing. What is starting in July?
Two, I'm sorry, there's two projects Mike's alluding to. We have two underground districts. One sixteen and Rule Twenty Eight A is down on Baboa Boulevard, Thirty Six towards Coast Highway. One Eleven is right in the center there, over towards, as you get, what's the streets? There are Thirty Eighth going down to about Twenty Second. So, over on One Eleven, we're going to start the water line work for that eventual undergrounding. Mike's alluding to One Sixteen starting in July. That, that contract's been written. We're going to go ahead and start the undergrounding of those utilities. We do have to work over the summer at least one, maybe two, so we'll be careful in July, but we need to get that started. That's probably what you're alluding to.
Can I ask? I mean, residents are going to ask us why we need to start in July, so what's the answer?
The simple answer, it's, it's about twenty-four months' worth of construction if you just start and don't stop. And that's with the water work. You've got a lot of infrastructure you're putting in the ground, almost twenty million dollars' worth of improvements. It's a lot of work, and it just doesn't happen in a few months in the winter, stop, come back. It would drag the project out for years and cost the residents much, much more if we did try to phase it through no summer impact.
Yeah, so the answer is, don't worry. You've got two more summers of this too. Got it? Okay, all right. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And just to that note too, I was going to point, as the mayor asked about workload. The assessment districts are resident-driven, and they drive our workload that we don't control. And this water line project was something that we were going to do later on, but now we have to pull it forward because we got to get in front of the resident-driven district. So, what that might mean, we're not sure in the schedule. Mike's working on the master schedule now. Maybe the Lido Island one just moves back a little while we fit this one in. So.
So, let me just understand this. So, when we're messaging with the residents, are any of the grumpy residents part of the assessment district work? Because they've been waiting for years for this underground assessment, correct?
I wouldn't call them grumpy, but they're, they're, you know, they're going to be part of this work and.
Oh, it's part of the overall messaging of how it needs to all fit together.
Correct. And we'll be reaching out to them and actually work on the side streets, Marcus and stuff, to try to stay off Baboa Boulevard in the summer. Work on scheduling that.
All right, thank you.
So, we have a little bit in wastewater I want to touch on if there's any questions. Two point two million, Carnation Avenue and some lining here. Any questions in wastewater? So, we're going to move into miscellaneous. We have quite a lot in miscellaneous. A lot of this you've seen before, fifteen point nine million. You can see the various components in there, some affordable housing, Baboa Village Enhancement. The general plan is in here, and also your contribution to the Orange Coast River Park that you requested, the twenty thousand dollars is in this.
What's the affordable housing?
This is money that's in the C I P that Community Development Department uses to work with the homeless in some aspect.
Yes.
So, they draw on.
And then what are we doing with the aircraft sound monitoring?
This was something council asked us to put in last year. The city manager's office is working in case they need to do more monitoring there.
Adding an additional one and our own volition?
One of the thoughts was maybe a possible monitoring station.
Good. I thought everybody forgot about that. Great.
And then under miscellaneous too, we have all our assessment districts, and they're labeled there for you, and we, you're pretty much caught up on that. But any questions under this area? Okay, so here's the summary of what our C I P is, and you can see the various categories percentage-wise. A lot of money in facilities, a lot of money in miscellaneous. I mentioned those big projects. And Grant Howland, some of the big drivers of the parks category, ninety six million dollars there. And to the question earlier, here's the funding breakdown. This is the new funding going into the C I P, and you can see a lot of it. There is some general fund, five million at the top, but you have FFP, you've got water sewer funds, eighty districts, tidelands money, SB one, gas tax, all different funds that go into this. So, the next thing we have with our C I P is, you know, this, this budget was done back in March, excuse me, March. And since then, we've made some revisions and requests and things. So, I have a slide here that's, these are proposed revisions. We'd like to go over real quick with you. On the first two, though, we have recusals. We have, if we could talk about those. Aaron, would you like the folks to leave the room, or should we ask the question?
Well, I think it's probably best that Kevin or council member Muldoon step out for the twenty eight discussion, and then we'll have council member Brenner step out for the West Coast Highway Landscaping.
So, these are projects we're proposing. The first one there is to buy additional twenty eight credits for two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. Wanted to see if there are any questions on that or things we can talk about.
Is this new? This isn't the same we were doing a few, two meetings ago, was it?
Same type of program. This would be new money added to the current proposed C I P. And it's coming out of Neighborhood Enhancement.
From, from whom and to go to what?
Quite, not quite identified. We have a couple cities that do say they have money. I'm not going to name those cities, but we have a couple.
Okay, and then for what? Which, which twenty eight project are we looking at?
We don't have it specifically in mind yet. This is if we continue to push. I think the next one, do we have enough to finish our twenty eight in the McFadden Square Area? Possibly. So, we're going to be close. The next one after that was Superior. We could start buying towards that if we, the price is right. It's your call if you want to have this like an opportunity fund.
Okay, all right.
So, that's available? Is that what you're saying?
There are a couple cities that have touched us that said they have some credits available if we'd like to purchase them.
The anticipation is that we may need them in the future.
Yes.
Mr. City Manager, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think at the twenty, two hundred thousand dollar mark, I think it's a reasonable amount to have put aside. And if it, if it isn't, then we'd let it fall to the fund balance.
All right.
Okay, then we can have Mr. Muldoon come back in and go to the next one. Ms. Brenner's left the room. This, this next project, well, Ms. Brenner's coming in, is relatively simple. It's, we're taking five hundred thousand dollars out of one of our current projects, West Coast Highway Landscaping. We expected possible contributions when we put the proposed budget together. We are taking that out now. We will have a possible funding gap in there. We don't know what that is yet. Mr. Sinicore is working on the plans right now. This will be for Phase Two and Three of West Coast Highway Landscape Medians. I think once we get the design done and we could probably get a bid, we'd want to see what that is and what our shortfall would be. I do expect some shortfall. We just don't have an answer to that yet.
Okay.
I'm going to keep moving down the list unless there's any other questions.
Keep going.
Okay, so then we have, we have put in ninety five thousand dollars for Buck Gully Restoration. This has to do with the illegal activity that happened. This is the money to do the revegetation. I expect this, it's coming out of general fund. It'll probably come back as some kind of insurance settlement. It'll be reimbursed. We have another item on there for storm drain system evaluations. We're asking for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This would come out of the undesignated general fund. It would be for closed-circuit television cammering of our reinforced concrete pipe system on our storm drain system. We want to see if we have any issues like we found in our corrugated metal system. Next one on here is actually our payment out of the Traffic Circulation and Transportation Fund. This is a project done by the City of Irvine through O C T A, and this is synchronization of our signals on Beneath the Canyon Ford that goes in and turns into Culver into Irvine. They're the lead. We're just paying our match in this project. Next project is the Junior Lifeguard Building. This is actually the funding that would allow us to do the conceptual design and the design and get our, all the way through coastal permits. We've talked about this project recently with council, and this would come out of FFP.
Didn't we at the last meeting approve this, this money anyway?
You did. You approved the architectural agreement. We only had enough in this budget to start it. This, once it's proven, the new budget would continue with that effort on the architect you approved.
Thank you.
The next one on here is Baboa Village Maintenance. We're just adding a little additional money from our B VAC group. We add additional restrooms now down by the Baboa Pier, and this would help fund those. And then we've got Ocean Boulevard Carnation Concrete Reconstruction. What we're doing here, we have the fully funded project there, but we've act, we've worked with Ms. Brenner and her community. We're going to be working through this year on the design. We're going to be working through this year on the design. It seems like we're going to have a lot of community involvements. We're going to take part of the construction money, $500,000, and we're going to move it into the next project on the list. This is the West Newport Streetscape Project. Several council members and some community folks have approached us, and would like to get something started in the northwest area of Newport Beach. I'm guessing this will be probably landscaping of some sort, maybe on Placentia. We haven't defined the project yet, but we are moving a half million dollars from Carnation, Ocean Boulevard, Carnation, over to West Newport Streetscape.
David, I'd like to take this moment to probably thank Councilmember Brenner for her generosity to District 2. Great.
Did a little horse trade.
She was very generous. I don't, that is a very big move. And she saw that. She knew that the Ocean Boulevard is going to take a little more time and thought this would be good money to help satisfy something over in this area.
And we did approve this streetscaping plan a few years ago.
In August 2016, you approved a plan that has both directions for private developments when they redevelop and also there are some public improvements. A lot of this also is in utility undergrounding, which is a whole nother discussion and not currently on your priority list, so we'll have to talk about that as we get into the project.
Okay.
This is something residents are really looking forward to. It's been on the books for a few years, so it's great to see some progress. Thank you.
Next item, we have some additional money we're putting in for harbor maintenance and minor repairs on our piers, title funds money. And the final project on here is some money for our oil wells. If you're not familiar, we have 15 oil wells the city owns, and they needed some work. Utilities ask, and this just got overlooked. They want to have $500,000 put in to re-drill, rework one of our primary well producers. So we have, that well's not producing well now. They need to go down and re-drill the well to get it back up to production levels that we'd expect.
Is this an indicator of problems to come in terms of the well infrastructures?
I think it's warranted. Many years ago, the city council formed a little working group to look at our wellfields because it is a revenue generator for our title lines, but it probably does need some level of long-term strategy on maintenance, how you want to produce those wells and keep them pumping. They all need some level of work. We do have a contractor that does regular maintenance on it, keeps things flowing, but there's some major stuff in the near future and probably to look at.
Could you remind me, what are the revenues we get from the oil production?
It gets generated and goes into our title lines account.
Right. How much do you remember?
I don't know that. Mr. Vakoyevich is here and can tell you all about our oil well system.
You're in the oil business.
Yes, thank you. Our current net revenue is about a half a million dollars a year based on today's oil prices. And just like Dave said, you know, one of the other items on the, for the capital improvement program is water well rehab, but our oil wells, same thing. They need to be rehabilitated. We have routine maintenance and routine cleaning and different things like that, but we would like to spend some more money to get these in better operation.
Do we have a master plan for our oil wells? I mean, because it's just popped up unplanned. Should we be looking at that going forward?
I mean, it's something we can discuss. Our focus is really to just keep them safe and operational and keep their production going. Just those focus on what we have existing and just keep the continued investment so they can keep producing.
And what they produce, we spend.
Yes.
All right.
Well, no, there's a half a million dollars net revenue, so, but in this case here, we need to do some one-time expenditures on our, basically our largest-producing oil well, which could recoup its costs in about a year's time.
Okay. All right, so it's an investment. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions on these rebudgets and items on this slide?
Questions?
Okay. So with that, and I mentioned, we had our projection that we published back in March. This would be looking forward now if all this went through. You're going to, originally had $96.2 million in a proposed budget. We're going to come up to about 93.8, excuse me, go down to about 93.8. That's the $1.3 million we just talked about, new expenditures. And then as things have been changed and finished since we did our March, we've basically reduced the budget by 3.6 million, and that gives us a new total of about 93.8 million. The funding's broken out there. Questions on that? Okay. So again, just good news. We're maintaining and beautifying our neighborhoods. We're improving our payment index, capital investment in Newport Harbor, rehabilitating our existing parks and facilities, and improving our cyclist pedestrian flows. And we're happy to answer any questions from the council at this time or the public.
Well, let me just, first of all, thank you. Thank you, staff. And I know you're working at 100 miles an hour to do all these important projects. We are very fortunate as a city to even be investing in our infrastructure and our neighborhoods and our harbor. We are very, very fortunate, and thanks to the constant improvement that commercial and residential property owners are doing to their properties, to continue to invest in the property values that eventually flow back to the city. And it's that continuous cycle of life in Newport Beach, but it really is important to keep our city looking beautiful, and we have a public works department that does a fine job, so thank you. I know you're working hard. Everybody has their priorities, but thank you for laying all this out in very, very place. And you also look for external funding sources. So out of, just to make a finer point on that, $5 million approximately comes out of the general fund, out of this total new spending of 50-some million dollars, and $45 million is coming from external sources, one way or the other, and reserves, some reserves on the facility side. So you're always looking under every rock to find whatever funds we can keep our, we find to keep our city looking beautiful. So thank you. Any questions up here? We'll turn it out to the public. Any comments from the public on our proposed capital improvement plan? None? We'll bring it back, and thank you, staff, and you're going to be busy. Thanks so much. All right. We'll move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I have a comment on the closed session. As I'm sure you're aware, the last item, Item C, is a complaint letter and your discussion of what to do about that complaint letter. And the complaint letter is about items of the sort that is exemplified by Item B on the current closed session, which is an announcement that you're going to be discussing initiation of litigation with no indication of what kind of litigation you're suggesting initiating. There have been nine notices of that sort in the last eight meetings, and only one of those was any report of any decision being made. So I think there is some basis for the complaint letter. Whether you agree with it or not, I hope that the city attorney will make clear to you when you're discussing what to do about the complaint letter, which is technically a threat of litigation, and that's how it's listed here. The response to such a letter does not have to be litigation. It simply needs to be a response letter of some kind to the cure and complaint, cure and correct letter. And in that letter, there doesn't have to be any admission of an error in what the council has done in the past, but just a promise that it will try to be more transparent in the future. And recognizing that the Brown Act is a floor on how transparent you need to be, and the city attorney assures you you're being as transparent as you need to be, it's in no sense a ceiling on how transparent you can be. So the letter, in response to this letter, could simply make some simple promises. I don't think Ms. Skinner is very clear what relief she is looking for, but a couple of simple promises the council could consider making are, number one, to indicate what the litigation is going to be about, instruct the city attorney to do that on the agenda, and number two, to perhaps report out when you make a decision not to initiate litigation. The Brown Act doesn't require you to do that, but the public would feel a lot more comfortable if they knew you'd made a decision not to do something. Those are a couple of simple promises you could make and would probably satisfy Ms. Skinner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, could you clarify once and for all how we are proceeding under the law according to the Brown Act provisions, please? Thank you.
So just briefly, you know, the Brown Act provides that the city council can meet in closed session to discuss initiation of litigation, and they actually give a template of how you can notice that. And basically, all you have to say is, you know, this is a council meeting regarding anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, and the number of matters that you're meeting about. And that's primarily done so that the city council isn't prejudiced by somebody who the council's thinking about initiating litigation against, knowing that they're thinking about it, because they may alter their position in response to that. And the legislature, when they adopted the Brown Act, you know, gave consideration to when things have to be disclosed and what needs to be disclosed, and the city council is fully complying with those directives.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comments on public or non-agenda items? All right.
So-
Oh, yeah. Please, Mr. City Attorney, tell us what we're going to be doing in closed session.
So the city council will actually not be meeting regarding Item 4A, the labor negotiations. We're going to take that off calendar. The city council will be meeting in regards to Items 4, B, and C, which is meeting with legal counsel, discuss possible initiation of litigation in regards to one matter, and meeting with legal counsel, discuss possible litigation by Ms. Susan Skinner for an alleged violation of the Brown Act on February 12, 2019. And that's all set forth in her correspondence dated May 11, 2019, which is in file with the city clerk.
All right. Well, thank you.
And I believe we have one recused.
I'm going to recuse myself on Item C because that complaint referenced the NAC on which I'm already recused.
Okay.
I'd like to announce that for the same reason, I'm also recusing myself on that for C as well.
Okay. This is always fun. All right. We are recessed until 7:00 PM. Thank you very much. You ready? All right. Hi, good evening. Whoa. We have had an adjustment to our microphone, so excuse us, we all are adjusting to, they're very loud. Good evening, and welcome to the May 28 regular city council meeting. I call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record rule, we've selected all members of council are present.
Mr. Harp is our closed session report.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. There's no closed session report this evening.
All right. We have an invocation by Pastor Peter Little of the Christ Pacific Church in Huntington Beach, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Hurdman. And Mr. Little, come forward, please. Thank you.
So my name is Peter, and I'm a pastor down the street, and I've been asked to lead this evening's invocation, and thank you for the privilege and the opportunity to do that. The church where I serve has a mission statement that begins like this. "We are cultivating a vibrant community of faith, hope, and love." And that's the kind of language of flourishing. And I think that everyone here this evening is interested in how Newport Beach and our neighbors can be a flourishing community. And so thank you for this opportunity for me to be here with you as together we work for and towards a flourishing and vibrant community. So if you're comfortable in doing so, I'd invite you to pray with me. Living God, first of all, thank you. We're so incredibly grateful for the breadth that we've been given today, for the time that we have been given on this day, for the opportunities we've been presented with, for the relationships that we enjoy, for this magnificent city in which we live and learn and work. And so, Living God, help these council members and all involved in tonight's agenda to approach this evening with a posture of gratitude, seeing the needs before them and before us in light of the vastness of your generosity. And we need help. So first of all, we ask that you would give us humility, the humility we need to not think of ourselves more highly than we ought to, but to consider the needs of others. And that's super difficult. We are not naturally humble nor naturally selfless, so help us with copious amounts of humility. Secondly, God, give us courage, the courage we need to do the right things when those things are often the more difficult things. Everyone in this room is a person of influence. We have voices that other people listen to. So would you, God, give us courage to use our influence and our voice for the sake of people who have less influence and less voice? Give us courage to provide voice for the voiceless, to exercise our power on behalf of those who are powerless. Lastly, God, grant these leaders all they need to be faithful stewards of the responsibilities and opportunities that you have given them. All that we have, we believe, has been given to us, including the challenges and opportunities before the council this evening, so please, we ask, Living God, to help each one this evening to approach these opportunities with thoughtfulness, with creativity, with hope, and with wisdom, especially with wisdom. So in humility, with courage, and with the hope of being faithful stewards, we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Would you please join me in saluting our nation's flag? Ready, begin.
[inaudible]
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 [inaudible][1622.03]
Over the past last 10 days or so, I attended the Orange County Sanitation District Board of Directors meeting, went over the capital budget. Then, this morning, I attended a great ceremony at the Police Department with the mayor and Councilmember Brenner, and it involved just two officers getting promotions, but it was just such a reminder of what an outstanding police force we have. And I mean that in the sense of just their sense of community, their sense of family. And there were the families, the two officers there, that were being honored, and then there were their friends, and then there were fellow officers, and it's just so easy to forget about that. It's just, we've got a real family there and some real professionals. Both of these officers work in the jails. I didn't realize that we process 3,500 people through the jail system every year, and I think they do it with a lot of, a high degree of professionalism. It's so important for us that people are treated properly even in those situations, and that the city is protected from the sorts of abuse claims that we see out there so often from other places. And it takes a real professional attitude, I think, to achieve that. So, that's just, those are my thoughts when I was watching this. And then, I think in the audience out there is a mentee of mine, and her name is Maria Richter, and she's a senior at Corona Del Mar High School. And Maria, you're out there? There she is. I didn't quite see her. So, she's interested in government and council in particular. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield.
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday, June 1, we're going to have our third annual Newport Harbor underwater cleanup at the Babo Bay Club. And over 250 above water and below water volunteers will be collecting trash, plastic, and other water pollutants. So, last year, we collected over 4,000, if you can believe it, 4,000 pounds of trash, all picked up by divers with their hands, and was removed from our harbor bottom. And if you'd like, there's, at 1:30, there'll be a post-party, which is really fun at the Bay Club there for $20 donation. There's live music, and you can see what goes on. You can ask questions about all kinds of environmental policies we have with the harbor, and on and on and on. So, it's a great event, and this will be our third year, so we're excited about that. The other item I have here is that I would like to propose to put on the Agenda A1 for discussion, making the Harbor Commission a part of the city charter so that we preserve this valuable body to help guide and assist with harbor issues in the coming decades. A few years ago, a prior council had a meeting to discuss removing the Harbor Commission in favor of a tidings committee. The Harbor Commission is sorely needed so that we have a balanced group of harbor professionals as well as concerned citizens to voice their valued opinions to issue, to issues, and offer up economically sound solutions. And that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. I certainly agree with Councilman Duffield that the more resident involvement, the community, the better. I'm going to ask for a future meeting to agendize a Marine Avenue Historical Committee. This committee would be a standing committee that would oversee any changes to Babo Island's Marine Avenue. It would include perhaps proper tree maintenance, tree replacement, dovetailing on Mayor Protem Will O'Neill's A1 for a similar notion, preserving the historical character and features of Marine Avenue, including things like park benches, crosswalks. I would request, though, this committee not have any purview or jurisdiction of a real property of those businesses and residences that are on Marine Avenue. It simply would have a say in what the community will look like for generations to come. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner.
Yes, I met at the Dahlia Overlook with Walt Howell, the PBNR Commission Chair, and some concerned citizens about the future of that area and what we would like that to look like. We're just beginning those conversations. I also spoke to the Cameo Shores Annual Meeting along with Matt Brisboy of CERT. I then went on to the General Plan Update Steering Committee meeting and was able to see the presentation by the consultants who were ultimately hired by that group, and was very impressed by that group of people. We attend, Will O'Neill, Mayor Protem O'Neill, and Councilwoman Hurdman and I continue to go to the Corona Del Mar Residents Association meeting every month, and we encourage any of you who live in that area to attend those meetings. They're very informative. The Finance Committee, I attended that. I went to Jeff Hurdman's fundraiser. I did a ribbon cutting for Reborn Coffee in Corona Del Mar, which was very, very interesting, and they have a whole new process for their beans that was very fascinating. And then, I attended the rendezvous ribbon cutting for the new restaurant. We've got a picture of that, and I wish we had a picture of the pastries, because the pastries were amazing. They are located near the Bank of America. They have a new owner, and they have amazing, amazing things. They serve breakfast and lunch, and they have fascinating and wonderful pastries. I went to a group luncheon with elected women of Orange County, and it was interesting talking to them about how their cities operate and the challenges that they have. We heard a presentation by our Public Works Director today about all the projects that we're doing in our city, and one of these elected women was telling me they need to raise their sales tax just to improve their roads, that she could bring a chunk of road to every meeting that they have. And it made me so grateful for what we have in Newport Beach and how well-maintained all of our infrastructure is, and that was really emotional today. I went to the Memorial Day service at Newport Harbor High School with Councilman Hurdman, Councilman O'Neill, and Mayor Dixon. I also went to the Pacific View Memorial Day Celebration, which was wonderful. It's put on by the American Legion Post 291, and they had pipes and drums, they had bag pipers, and it was a very emotional morning. We've got two events coming up. On this Saturday, we have the Corona Del Mar 5K coming up. We have a slide on that, I believe. And that's before you go over to the underwater cleanup at the Babo Bay Club, you can come to the Corona Del Mar 5K in the morning. We have so many events going on in town, it's exciting. And then, on July 20, we have a save the date that is so important to our community. It's the grand opening of our fire station and library in Corona Del Mar, and that was the result of so many involved citizens that it's going to be a real day of celebration. Starts at 10:30 in the morning, so mark your calendars for July 20. Thank you.
Mr. Hurdman.
Yeah, thank you. Joy gave my report.
I do.
I do want to say, though, there's a couple of things I would like to add. The Babo Island Museum and Historical Society put on a barbecue yesterday on Memorial Day for veterans on the island, and it was just an outstanding event. Dennis Bress, who's sitting here in the front row, was one of the major organizers of that. Want to recognize you, and thank you, Dennis, for that work. I've been conducting, I had five applications for people to be a part of the new Aviation Committee from District 5, so I've spent some time this last week conducting interviews and selecting a finalist. And this Sunday is the annual Babo Island Parade. Starts 11:30. Don't miss it. It's a lot of fun. Thank you.
Is that 11:30? I thought it was earlier than that. Is it 11:30?
The parade starts.
Oh, okay.
You have to be there at 9:30, Diane.
That's what I thought. Mayor Protem.
Let's see. I was able to attend the Newport Coast Elementary PTA Awards. If anyone knows the principal over there, Julie McCormick, she's announced that she's going to be stepping down as principal and actually going back to teaching over at Corona Del Mar High School. So, I wish her well, but it's going to be a loss to the school. We had an Iftar, which is breaking of the fast for Ramadan, over at Temple Bot Yum, which I was invited to, and it was very well-attended, and I just wanted to say thank you to our entire faith community for putting that on and inviting me. And then, the Field of Honor. Newport Harbor Exchange Club has done a fantastic job, and I was able to represent the city at the opening. And then, Newport Beach Police Department had their open house, and it got off to a rocky start with all the rain, and then it came, it was beautiful, and they had all of their exhibitions, and a lot of families were there, so that was fantastic. And then, I'll just echo, the Newport Harbor High School Memorial Day is one of the best things of the year, so I just want to say thank you to Annie and Sean Bolden over there. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, and I have a few items. I attended a Leadership Tomorrow Mayor's Panel in the community room a week or so ago with the mayors of Tustin, Costa Mesa, and myself with the Leadership Tomorrow participants. And Leadership Tomorrow has been underway for something like 39 years in helping to train and develop our future leaders and elected leaders and civic leaders all over the county. So, it's just really a pleasure to participate. And Mayor Protem and I attended Supervisor Michelle Steele's Mayor's Breakfast last week, and it's a roundtable discussion of current issues amongst all of the cities in District 2, and always enlightening. Also, for future notice, I have my town hall, I think it's my 23rd Town Hall next Monday, June 3, at 6:30 PM at Marina Park. And I always enjoy meeting and hearing, meeting with the community and talking about community issues that are important to our residents. And Marina Park is at 1600 West Babo Boulevard. This morning, Ms. Brenner and Mr. Avery and I attended the police promotion. That's always, always a proud moment to recognize our outstanding police officer staff. I've been neglectful in reminding the community about our General Plan Steering Committee meeting, meetings that meet every other Wednesday, and I am an ad hoc member, so I sit, we meet here, and I sit over at the end, and don't say too much, but I am enjoying the meetings. And as Councilmember Brenner just mentioned, the committee has selected the firm to conduct the Listen and Learn, Community Engagement portion of our General Plan Update. So, I urge all of you who are interested to 6:00 PM every other Wednesday, right here in council chambers. And not many people are attending. Mr. Moser, you attend, and that's good, but we really need to hear more from the community. And you will be hearing, the community will be hearing more as the Listen and Learn process gets underway, but it really is a good reminder to everybody to attend. I attended the Exchange Club's Field of Honor event yesterday on Memorial Day since I missed a week ago. I was out of town, and it's just an amazing, amazing 1,700, 1,776 American flags line, the bluff overlooking the back bay and Newport Harbor. It's just really stunning. But a special shout-out to the Exchange Club, all volunteers, all veterans, all wonderful patriots of our wonderful country, and remembering the people who sacrificed their lives on Memorial Day. So, it was a very wonderful event. Babo Island Parade, Mr. Hurdman mentioned, on June 2, and I think that's it. And then, a couple of other things. Upcoming events. Mr. Duffy mentioned the June 1 cleanup, so I don't need to mention that, Babo Island Parade. The city's Harbor Department and the Orange County Sheriff Department are holding an abandoned vessel auction Wednesday, June 5, at Marina Park. Public viewing of vessels is from 9:00 AM to 9:59 PM. Is that right? And the cash only, must be AM. And the cash-only auction starts at 10:00 AM. The city's Recreation and Senior Services Department is hosting another movie in the park, featuring Ralph Breaks the Internet. The event begins at Mariners Park, 7:00 PM. I think that's this Friday. June 7 through June 9 is the Wooden Boat Festival at Babo Yacht Club, open to the public, and this event showcases several one-of-a-kind and beautiful wooden boats on display throughout the weekend. And all of these events and more can be found on the city's website. On the homepage is the calendar, so please look out for more events. And I think that is it. All right. Are there any items? We'll move in, oh, public comments, excuse me, Madam Clerk. I almost skipped over you, sorry.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 14. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action. And I need to announce that I will be recusing myself on item 8 due to real property interest if the item is pulled, and that amendments have been distributed relative to the minutes, which is item 1 for council consideration.
All right. Council, any items to pull from consent calendar items 1 through 14? Mr. Avery.
I have none.
Mr. Duffield.
I have to recuse myself on item number 8 from real property investments.
Okay. Mr. Muldoon. Ms. Brenner.
Item 3.
I'm sorry?
Item 3.
Item 3.
Yes.
Mr. Hurdman.
I have none.
Mayor Protem.
I'd like to pull items 5 and 6.
Very good. Let me just make sure that I didn't have anything to pull. You've got them. All right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, over here. At this time, I'd like to recommend regarding item 14, which is the John Wayne Airport General Aviation Improvement Program update. For this item, staff recommends we pull this item off the calendar and bring back after we get more specific information from the county on the revised JIP plan that will be considered, excuse me, by the board on June 25. Depending on when we get the information, we may bring this back either as a special meeting or a regular meeting.
All right. Very good. Thank you. All right, Mayor Protem, do we have a motion?
We do. I'd like to move the balance of the consent calendar with item 1, incorporating the amendments. Item 3 pulled by Councilmember Brenner. Item 5 pulled by Councilmember O'Neill. Item 6 pulled by Councilmember O'Neill. Item 8 with a recusal from Councilmember Duffield, and number 14 being pulled off calendar by staff.
I'll second the motion.
All right. May we have public comments on the consent calendar, please? Please come forward.
My name is Catherine Martin-Walcott, and I'm here representing the Martin Family Trust. My parents are also here as well. My father should be back in a moment. Can you hear me? 1824 West Oceanfront is located in an RM block. In the 80-plus years my family has owned this property, it has always been some form of multifamily zoning, initially R3, then MFR, now RM. With all due respect, this proposal appears to be a solution that is in search of a problem that doesn't exist, at least on our block. As a background, for any who didn't get to wade through my email, the family's property is three lots. They range in size from 120 feet deep to 137 feet deep, roughly twice the size of the R2 lots that are in the block one up from us, and larger than the lot next door on which currently a two-unit, 33-foot-high building is being built to the maximum amount. Multifamily zones come with benefits and with detriments. One of the detriments is that a very large building can go up next to you. One of the benefits is that you can build your own very large building. I fail to see how it damages the living experience of anyone living in the RM zone to have a single-family or dual-family residence built that is the same exact envelope as the other properties and structures that are built around it in the RM zone. Over the years, my family has watched buildings go up for years. We've never objected because we knew where we lived and what our zoning was. My parents are not enthusiastic about the three-story building currently looming over their property and their yard, but they accepted that because they knew they could build a similar building. They definitely never contemplated that at any point they would be deprived of the right or required to build a building that was four feet shorter than their nearest neighbor. As you know, on the oceanfront, every foot counts, every inch of view counts. If the proposed changes are adopted, my family will lose a property right we've had for many years. Essentially, you would be punishing my sisters and me for encouraging my parents to age in place and remain in their home of over 50 years and not accept any of the many offers they've received to sell the property over the years. Applying R1 standards and R2 standards in an RM zone will not improve matters for anyone. It will just make the owners of those lots build to the maximum, build three-unit buildings where they could be building something less dense. Under the city council proposal, my family would have to build units that are more cramped, have more parking issues, and generally be less desirable than the building that is going up right next door to us with two units and 33 feet in height. Imposing R1 and R2 standards on an RM block starts to look like spot zoning or down zoning to those of us who have not already built to the maximum. Down zoning is supposed to be handled through general plan amendment procedures and protections, not through arbitrarily applying building standards that are generally applied to a zone we're not in. RM is our appropriate designation and development standards, and we will vigorously oppose any efforts to change that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other public comments on consent calendar? Please come forward.
So, I just want to, this is where I can just make public comments about anything?
No, 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 that comes later. This is just consent.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other items, any other comments on the consent calendar? Please come forward. See, none. All right, we'll bring it back. Any other council comments?
I'll move that. Move the item.
All right. All right. I think it was seconded. All right, we're ready. Let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for item 3. Ordnance number 2019-9, and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach, amending portions of Chapter 10.28 and 15.16 and adding section 15.60.030 to the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to construction activities and signage in designated high-density areas. Councilmembers Brenner and Hurdman?
Item 2.
This is on consent calendar items 1 through 14, other than the items removed 3, 5, and 6. Okay. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right.
Madam Mayor, if I might, just on item number 4 that we just adopted, it's the initiation of discussions. I just want to, okay, all right, thank you.
All right. What is the first item, number 5? 3? Item number 3. And who pulled it? If you wanted to speak, Ms. Brenner?
I pulled this because I'm not absolutely certain about our Saturday ban. I have concerns about owners who are doing their own work, and I believe it said in the initial correspondence that I saw that owners would be exempted from this, but in reading the resolution, I couldn't find anything saying that. My specific experience is that when we built the second story on our house, I was the general contractor, and my husband... the second story on our house, I was the general contractor, and my husband was a schoolteacher, and we did as much of the work as we could ourselves, and we, um, one of the problems when you, I have come to really appreciate general contractors and think they're worth their weight in gold, because what happens when you do the work yourself is that the subcontractors don't have the same allegiance to someone building a house one time that they do to a contractor who's going to be using them time after time after time. And often, I could only get subcontractors to come out on Saturdays when they were not working for the general contractor with whom they did a lot of business. So, I know there aren't a lot of us in town that do our own work, and there, you know, most people just hire a contractor, but I'm concerned that we're penalizing people who are doing their own work and only have time during the off-hours to do that. So, I just wanted to talk about that a little bit before we implement a ban on all Saturday work.
Okay. Mr. Hurdman, you have a comment?
I do. I just want to point some things out regarding this. Eliminating one day a week of construction is a 17% loss of construction in time to a project. If it's an 18-month project, it extends it to 21 months. If it's a 24-month project, it extends it to 28 months. That's the first thing I want to point out. Saturday-only work may result in an increase in subcontractor bids. Take a $3 million project and add the carrying costs of constructions to the loan. A $3 million project, by eliminating Saturday work, adds three months of construction loan costs, at a cost of $105,000, and four months at a cost of $140,000. I'm just wondering if we're really accomplishing here what we're hoping to accomplish, expediency in terms of getting projects finished that is, are disruptive to our quality of lives, while at the same time trying to keep costs down. It seems like we're doing exactly the opposite. It really concerns me. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on, up here on item number 3? I will say, I sympathize with your, both your comments. Just this past Saturday, my quiet Saturday was disrupted by stone sign across the street. I mean, the entire day, from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. All day long, this sign, all day long of stones, whatever the technical term is, stonework. Made my mind crazy on a beautiful day. Anyway, no more comments up here. Why don't we go out to the public to hear any comments on item number 3? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. In addition to the Saturday construction ban that you are considering, and at least two of the council members have concerns about, at least the way it's currently phrased in the ordinance, there's a second part to this ordinance which has to do with the requirement to put a informational sign on a fence. The requirement to put a fence around a construction site applies to the entire city, but for reasons I cannot fathom, this particular ordinance, as written, is asking for a sign with contact information, and the original purpose of this entire ordinance had to do with parking congestion, and the sign would provide information when people have concerns about parking noise or anything else going on behind the fence, who to call, who to contact, both in connection with the construction and, and at the city. But for reasons I cannot fathom, the requirement to put the instruction, the directional sign, the contact information, only applies in a very limited part of the city, and I cannot understand why that would be. It would, it seems a very simple matter to put the sign on all fences wherever a fence is required, and I do not, I cannot imagine why we would not want the sign to be there. And then, as I explained in writing, there is a further detail that seems to be needed to be worked out, which is, we have, in the city, we have permit requirements in a different title of our code for putting signs around the city. One of those allows the contractor currently to put on their advertising signs, like they're on a corner lot, and they can put a sign on both sides of the fence. And it's not clear from our ordinance whether this sign counts towards one of the two they're allowed to put up or not. So that's another matter. First, should it apply citywide? I certainly think it should. And second, should this sign count towards the quota of signs they're allowed to put on their fence? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item? Please come forward. See, none? All right, we'll come back. Ms. Brenner?
Um, in addition, I was wondering what the positions are of the Corona Del Mar Residents' Association, the BIIA, and some other homeowners groups. Do we have letters from them stating what their positions are on this issue?
Thank you. I'm Simone Georgis, your community development director. Thank you, Councilmember Brenner, on the question. We presented the subject matter at the Corona Del Mar Town Hall. We talked about the, the limiting construction on Saturdays, and we talked about the information signage. We thought there was support for the item from just looking at the crowd audience. We didn't receive any letters of support, but just from interaction with the crowd, we felt that there was enough support just for these specific two items, which was restricting construction on the Saturday plus the information sign.
Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you. So I'm reviewing the draft language, and it looks like there is no exemption for a real property owner, but it, it seems like the real safeguard is not based on who's doing the activity, it's how you categorize activity, whether it's loud or creates a disturbance. Would you say that's accurate?
That's correct. The prohibition on Saturday is strictly noise, so we did recognize that homeowners need an opportunity to maintain their properties. And so, we just, we duplicated the noise restriction from a Sunday, we added it to a Saturday. You could still have contractors at a job site, but it's, it's that loud noise that's disturbing the neighborhood. We wanted to make sure there was a restriction on both the Saturday and the Sunday.
So contractors that can still arrive, clean up, do other work, they just can't use a saw?
Saw on, on stone.
That's correct.
And have people in the industry reached out to you and objected or given you, voiced any concerns?
Early on, when we started this discussion, it was maybe 18 months ago with the construction community, they, they wanted a break on Saturday. They, the construction community wanted a break on Saturday. There was some, some support from, from the residents community for the break on Saturday, but it was primarily the contractors. They, they were too exhausted. They, they wanted the weekends off.
So it's either the developer or the homeowner who's wants it out of Saturday to their schedule to make the project go more quickly?
That's correct.
And just in your personal experience, do you have any concerns about this as drafted?
I don't have any concerns. Again, this is really a response to the, kind of the residents at large. It was meant to be kind of giving the, everybody a break on the impacts of construction and visitors all on a Saturday, and that was the, kind of the point of how we drafted this. At the same time, understanding that homeowners need an opportunity to maintain their properties, we just wanted to make sure it was done in a, in a less disturbing manner.
So here I see, if they violate this section, they're guilty of a misdemeanor. That's a sort, that, that same severity of the violation applies in other instances?
It does, but we can always charge it as an infraction. We don't have to charge it as a misdemeanor. So we always take into account kind of what the circumstances are before we went forward with any type of criminal filing. And typically, the procedure of the city is that code enforcement issues multiple administrative citations before even comes a criminal matter.
That, that standard and other restrictions on building?
That's pretty much standard with all code enforcement.
Okay. And how does this affect Chick-fil-A? Are they going to be open on Sundays now?
They will not.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have one? Mr. Hurdman?
Simone, if I remember right, this, there was also a study session held on this, was there not? I specifically remember representatives from the Babo Island Improvement Association sitting in the front row here, and they came to speak to us about construction issues and construction parking issues on the island, which helped to generate what we're considering tonight, correct?
That's correct.
And was this not aimed at the more denser areas in our city as far as the signage is concerned because of the disruption to quality of life that construction can present?
You're correct. So the, the Saturday prohibition is both, and the sign provision is both on those high-density areas, which attaches a?
So if someone is building a new home out in Santa Ana Heights?
It won't affect them.
It, signage is not necessary out there?
That's correct.
Okay, because of the likelihood of construction being disruptive, just, there just isn't that much of a possibility.
And if the council would like, we actually have a kind of an activity map, if you'd like to see that. Samir, can you bring that up? Go ahead. They'll, they'll change it. So what you see on the screen is, all those red dots are construction activities, and then you could barely see kind of that grayed-out area, which we define as the high-density areas. And again, we define the high-density areas where we have the most construction, and it's not the entire city, it's just the peninsula and the islands and a portion of Corona Del Mar.
These are all current permits?
That's correct.
Simone, I know it's called Newport Coast, but it's still part of the city, I'm just saying.
That's correct.
Where is it? Where is it?
We didn't have enough space.
You fell off the cliff. You're in the Pacific Ocean. Mr. Avery?
Yeah, I think there's a good deal of flexibility in the sense that it, it's not about stopping construction, it's about having a quiet neighborhood, at least a reasonably quiet neighborhood. So some noise is okay, it's just the, the skill saws and the hammering and all that, but certainly, there's a lot of things that could be done on a Sunday that don't use those tools. And obviously, you know, it depends on sort of the relationship neighbors have, calling a complaint and the rest of it. But I think, to me, it's, given those, when you think, it's not a construction ban, it's a, it's a noise reduction effort to give people some peace in their neighborhood on a Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday?
Yeah, both days. We're doing Saturday already, right, or not?
We're doing Sunday, we're adding Saturday.
Yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Brenner?
My only question about the signage is, are those signs valuable even during the week, though, for people that are not in the most impacted area? That maybe a sign requiring them to have a phone number if there's a problem anytime might be valuable to have that be citywide? And I, it's just a question. I'm thinking that sometimes people in other areas do have problems with construction, and what harm is there in having the sign that has a phone number that they can reach someone?
Yeah, I kind of agree with you. Mr. O'Neil, as a representative from the off-the-cliff part of Newport Beach, do you have a point of view? I mean, do you object to sign, signage?
I do, yeah. But, so, the reason we had done, done it the way that we did was the same discussion, actually, that Mr. Hurdman was referencing in regards to the, to the study session. There's, in the portion, it was cut off from the map, and then actually quite a bit of the portion that is at the top, if you're looking at it from a map, the top end versus the bottom end, the top end, a lot of those places are in HOAs, and the HOAs already govern the, the operations of construction significantly. And when we're hearing from folks who want to make sure that they have a better sense of where the, you know, how to, who to reach, how to reach them, what's going on, that's what HOA governing bodies are very good at, and perhaps too good at from time to time in some people's opinions. And so, you can look up in this map, I mean, you've got Big Canyon, you've got the Port Streets, you've got, you know, Sea View, you've got, and then you get up into Newport Coast, and they're all HOAs, significant, and Spyglass. You've got a significant number of them that are behind gates as well. And so, the, a lot of the, a lot of the areas up there, people choose HOAs for aesthetic reasons, just as much as they do control over what's going on inside their communities. And so, my strong suggestion would be that in areas like that, you allow people to buy into the HOA and, and be governed by those CCNRs rather than a municipal code that operates significantly better when you're talking about high-impact areas like the island, Corona Del Mar, Lido, you know, and we're just not seeing the same impact in the area. So when we're, when we're trying to do generally applicable laws, we should at least, we should definitely be taking into consideration the reasons why people choose to live in certain parts of the community, which is a great reason why we have districts for election purposes. So I would just recommend that we keep it the way it is in the map, so that the folks who are not interested in this kind of program, who have never voiced a request for it, aren't impacted by it.
I'll go along with your thought process. I live on Lido, and we have CCNRs, and we don't have a gate, and so they're looking to their councilperson for relief, but I accept your point. Mr. Duffield?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to chime in that we have had this policy in Bay Shores for a number of years. I'd like to throw out a number, but I, it's probably wrong. I think it's got to be at least eight or 10. When it first came to us, we were all...
Excuse me, you mean the noise or the signage?
Construction.
It's just no construction?
No construction on Saturday. And I wanted just to say that through it all, we've, we appreciate it so much now. It has made our weekends normal again. And yes, it does take longer to build a house, but we all consider that community a weekend community. That's why you live there. And, and so it has really, really been fabulous to not have to listen to that noise. But I would agree if, that if we allowed them to do lighter stuff, but, you know, enforcing, that's a tough one, but, but yeah, I would say cleaning up is, is fine. But yeah, sawing rock is, all day long, is horrible. So anyway, it works in Bay Shores so far.
Well, let me follow up with some questions, Mr. Georgis and Mrs. Mayor. So how would we enforce this? And I don't have that right in front of me, but the word is like unreasonable noise. I mean, it's kind of a general term. How do we define noise?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. In terms of the noise, I think we have two level of noise. We have the ambient noise, and we have what we call a high-level, 55 decibels is what we consider to be acceptable level. Now, in the past, we have never considered the decibel levels with construction because construction can vary in terms of the activity as to the decibel levels of, you know, certainly somebody who is using a jackhammer is going to have a little bit more noise than somebody who is just basically framing a small patio cover. To that extent, we do not have a specific standard that addresses noise with construction. We only address in our municipal code two items, an ambient noise, which is, you know, your daily average noise that results from any kind of activity in the area, and the other one is the 55 decibel, which is an acceptable limit for noise. That comes in in areas sometimes where we have a high, like, air conditioning units that are running at a pretty high noise level, and that's how we regulate that type of noise.
Okay. Well, how will we regulate it? How, so if it's noisy and someone is using a jackhammer at 8:00 AM on Saturday, what do they do?
So we do have a code enfor, a weekend code enforcement program that we alternate between Saturday and Sundays, and we've done that through our summer season. It's kind of our pilot program. So if we do get a, if there is a noise issue, there, the resident is free to call our code enforcement hotline, and from there, our code enforcement officer can go out and respond. And we're going to have staff on the weekends.
Should we, I don't think this is, that number is on the signage that's on the fence, correct? Maybe there should be an additional telephone number for contacting code, city, Newport Beach City Code Enforcement if you suspect a violation?
It's, it's going to be on the signage.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Perfect. In large, 25-point type?
75.
75, okay, great. All right. So just so it's all clear, though, just to restate where we are, we're not prohibiting construction on Saturday, we're only limiting excessive noise, and that noise will be enforced if a resident proactively calls the number that's on the fence for Saturday code enforcement.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then we're not going to extend the signage or the noise requirements outside, well, I'll say it this way, we're confining it to the high-dense areas per the map that are self-evident.
That's correct.
All right.
I'll move, I'll move staff reporter on this.
I'll second. Shall we vote?
I already read the title earlier, so my apologies. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, the next item is number 5, and... All right, the next item is number five, and you pulled that.
I did. I would just, I wanted to afford a little bit of time to bid representative because a year ago we had discussed the issue of the conversion from a bid under the 1989 law to a 1994, 1994, 94, 94 law.
That's correct.
And I had stated that if we hadn't seen progress on that, that I would likely vote no, so I wanted to at least provide a forum to have a discussion about whether that would be something that is going to happen in the future or where the, where the progress is being made, and if there's no progress, where we go from there. So I wanted to at least just provide the forum. I don't need a staff report on this, I'd just like to provide a forum for our bid representative to discuss.
Any other comments from the dais? No? Well, why don't we open it up to the public? Please come forward. Anyone wants to speak on this item relating to the Corona del Mar Business Improvement District? See none? Oh, excuse me.
Bernie, would you, you don't have to, but... I would recommend it.
Make a pitch.
No, I'm saying you don't have to, but I'm providing the opportunity to discuss, discuss it.
Bernie Swalstad, bid chairman for Corona Mar District. You look at page 5.5 in your agenda on the staff report, you'll read that, it says that the bid revenue, such-and-such use of member assessments are restricted to so-and-so, which doesn't allow any monies from, from the bid to try to form a new district, the number, next item, bid board members of existing advisory board would be restricted from discussing or taking action on forming another entity. The next item, bullet point, outreach. Conducting outreach to the proposed membership and providing educational materials about the 1994 law bid and its benefits would require time and money. Proposed members would have to volunteer their time and financially support this undertaking. These things won't happen in Corona Mar. Some, that simple.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments up here? You want to say something, Ms. Brenner?
I guess I'm confused. The reasons that it won't happen in Corona del Mar is because the current bid members will not do those things necessary, is that what you said, Bernie?
I don't believe there are any members or public in Corona Mar that would wish to do this. We just advertised for bid board members, and we have nine bid board members, and we have the same ones coming back if you approve this, and no new ones. There isn't, there isn't anybody in the community that's going to spend money and their time and energy to do this. We have no interest in it as a bid board, period, and it doesn't make any sense. This doesn't make any sense. Number one is that we worked with Mary to reduce the staff time, she doesn't come to our bid board meetings usually, lately she has somebody who thinks she's in training, but that saves a lot of time and money. I don't think we spend half as much time and money as maybe you do on a peninsula for these committees or the West Newport for those committees, and we bring in $100,000 a year, and you don't bring any money in from those committees on those two areas. And they're like a bid over there because they spend millions of dollars, and they should to improve the community, probably. So we're doing a good job, this isn't necessary, we really don't take that much staff time, we make money for the city, and we do a good job. It's that simple.
All right. Mr. Mayor Protem?
Sure, I think, I think I just, I think they're, they are doing a good job. And just, and real briefly for members of the public, this is, this is admittedly a little wonky, but basically, a business improvement district is something that's created where the, the city actually sends out bills to merchants in order for them to, and they have to pay it. If they don't pay it, we have the ability to sue them. And the idea is that we have the, they, this business improvement district is formed for the purpose of, of enhancing a particular group. So in this group, it's the Corona Mar businesses, and the next one that's going to come up, it's the rest, all, every single restaurant in Newport Beach. And what, what I would like to, what I, what I like about the conversion of the 94 is you'd actually have to go through another vote to find out if people really want to be a part of it, instead of getting a bill from the city, which is government compulsion in order to join a, what should be essentially a private organization. So what I had said last year was that I wanted to see a conversion over the 94 law because what we would see then is, we would know for sure that you had a majority of supportive people. And I'm just, I am concerned when I hear that a conversion vote wouldn't happen or wouldn't pass, and I've heard the same thing on the restaurant bid, because you wouldn't, you would have too much apathy, you wouldn't have enough engagement, and you wouldn't have enough people viewing this as a, you know, something worth paying the relatively little amount of money it costs. I just, I have this, I have this philosophical concern about government compulsion on an issue like this where we don't know, and we haven't known for quite some time, that there is a majority voting support for it. So I, I said I'd vote no last year if I didn't see the progress. I didn't, so I'm going to be voting no on this when, if, if someone makes the motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Do we have a motion on the table? We already had public comment. I think the hesitancy that people, you're seeing the council is that, and I'll say myself, I've been uncomfortable with this arrangement, the 1984. I like the idea of a business improvement district, absolutely, where business people, property owners come together to form their mini-form of democracy to keep their area, business area improved, from sidewalk cleaning to safety and any other areas to improve. And that's why the law was amended, to give more ownership to the local property owners and to enable more independence there, and not rely on the governing agency such as the city to fund their activities. Instead, the group becomes reflective of the desires of the business owners, property owners, and the value that is created, like in any business, to create value, then customers will come. If you don't create value, customers don't come. And the 1994 law was created many years ago, and almost 20, whatever, 25, 25 years ago, to give greater ownership to property owners and to minimize the involvement of the governing agency in many procedural ways. I think it's time that we look at this. I'll let some other comments are coming up here before I say what I was going to say next. Mr. Hurdman.
I was just wondering if there are any members of the bid here, other than Bernie, who might like to speak to us.
Are there any members of the bid who would like to come forward?
No.
No. All right, Ms. Brenner, you had another comment?
Well, I just wanted to say that the bid has done some really good things in Corona del Mar, and I hate to not be supportive of them, but I would like to see them transition over to the 1994 system. I agree with, with Mayor Protem O'Neil that it should be something that people opt into rather than are forced to do by the city, but is there, if the board is not willing to do this, what are our options?
Well, a moment, let me, before I answer that, Mr. Avery, do you have a question? Comment?
I just basically agree with the trend here, and this has been, we've been aware of this for a number of years, it's a tough thing to face, and it's good intentions all the way around, it's what we all want, but it's the method that we're getting there that I think bothers us, this, you know, sort of subsidy and the city billing everybody, it really needs to be turned around and get to the, to, you know, the right place where it feels right and where people are excited about it. Clearly, there's an issue when people aren't volunteering to be a part of the organization, and it's just something that needs, needs to be reworked, as far as I'm concerned, because it's not working here. We can just tell by on the dais here and no one's showing up to support them. And Bernie's just done incredible job over the years, so I think it's, makes it difficult for us to sort of come to terms with it because a number of people put a lot of time and effort in this, but it, it's just been limping along for a long time.
Well, and let me, I'll just reflect, if I may, some of the sensibility up here is that we believe in the business improvement district concept. We are endorsing a concept that the legislature enacted in 1994, and many cities are operating business improvement districts under the 1994 law. Admittedly, during a transition period from the 85 law, whatever it is, 89, to the 94, there's a little bit of a hurdle to overcome, but that's doable. Other business improvement districts have been formed and with great success. I'd like to suggest that, I hate to keep kicking this can down the road, so I would like to make a suggestion that perhaps we allow the, the current format and structure of the current districts on the Corona Mar Business Improvement District, but we withhold our $40,000 budget allocation as incentive to help transition, help us transition. I will, the mayor can appoint a working committee of two council members to work with the business improvement district and staff to help work through a new, a transformation into the new law and come back in the next 60 days with a recommendation on how to accomplish that. That would be my motion.
I would second that motion.
Okay, any comments? Can we vote?
No.
Public still open to the public?
So hang on a second. So Bernie, the answer is no, but I would like to hear from Bernie, so if the, if the council would entertain me, I would like to hear.
Okay, Bernie, go ahead.
I didn't think you closed the public off yet, I didn't hear that you did. Number one is that you hold these hearings every year for people in the district to come in here and complain and want to get out of the district. I don't think that's been brought up here. You say, well, nobody's here talking about it, nobody's here opposing the district, that's what these meetings are for, this one and the next one. Nobody's here opposing it, so that's something that you need to take into consideration. I think, and the staff can correct me if I'm not wrong, I think the 94 has to be property owners, not businesses. Staff, do you know if that's true or false?
I'm pretty sure it can be either, the way that the law is written, but let me just consult my notes for one moment.
That would make it even more impossible, but...
I'm sorry, what's the answer? Yes, it can be either property owner or business owner.
So anyway, if you don't vote for it tonight and don't take your suggestion, then the bid would be deceased in a few weeks.
Well, I would say no, I mean, you could continue, well, this is what I'll ask Mr. City Attorney. If we withhold our $40,000 of public funds, the bid can continue to exist until we take further action to transform to the 1994 setup.
So you're not obligated, I just spoke to Mary, and you're not obligated to give them the $40,000 at any point.
But they could continue.
But they could continue with, with the amount of money that they get from the assessment if you move forward with it, and the council isn't contractually obligated to give them the $40,000.
All right, and so the motion is, thank you, so the motion is that we will not allocate the $40,000 of public money, but we will, the mayor will set up a working committee of two council members to review the transition, transformation, transition path to the 1994 law. Mayor Protem, you have a comment?
If I might, yeah, I might want to clarify. I recognize this was a difficult one when I pulled it. The, here's, here's what I just want to make sure I clarify, because the way that the bids are, the bid law is set up, we basically have to have two hearings. One of them is this one where we are approving their fiscal year annual report and their proposed budget, which if we don't approve that, that's actually a problem for the bid, so that would probably need to come in.
Let's amend the motion on that, okay.
Okay, and then the, the other coming into the equation as well is the following meeting, we're going to be having a discussion about essentially renewing it for the coming year. It's a public meeting, that's what, that's what Bernie was referencing there. So within that context, it sounds like what you're, what you're suggesting is that we, you'd form a subcommittee of two council members, and those, and just given, given where I've been publicly on this, it would probably make sense to have that be someone other than me. The, it, it strikes me that we would, we would, if, if you're recommending having a discussion among multiple council members on an ad hoc basis to come back in 60 days, then we would probably, we don't need a commitment now because it's not in front of us, but it would be essentially a commitment to renew the bid for the coming year because we, there's no way that we could...
Of course.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I, that everyone understood the process on this. So that's the question, then, so Mr. Harp, okay, go ahead, Mr. Harp, because I have one other thing.
Briefly, we couldn't use staff time, or probably technically council member time to actually form the 1994, so we'd have to be real clear on what the scope of work is.
Yeah, the, as I understand it, the scope of the ad hoc is simply the, the discussion for, of council priorities, right, and, and how that interplays with the bid in the coming year. So last year, the concern that I had raised was the same one that we've been voicing now, and I had, I had said just from, for me personally, if it came back without a, a transition plan in place, I wouldn't be voting for it. And so it sounds like that has essentially become a majority support up on the dais, but it would be at least up to the, up to the subcommittee to come back and make recommendations to the council on the proper approach in the coming year from a policy standpoint, and make some, just, it can be essentially a receive and file, it can be a study session item, but it would not be, it would not be forming the 1994 bid on behalf of, it would not be, that, that would not be the recommendation, as I understand it, Mayor.
That is correct, and then through that ad hoc committee process, and that's certainly a, a public process to inform the business community of Corona del Mar, those members who are interested in forming a business improvement district under the 1994 law are encouraged to look into that.
Okay.
And that would be, to your point, that this is not council-directed, it will be generated at the business level, correct?
So then if I, can I ask one more, just one more clarification? Okay, so then if, if what you're, if, if the recommendation, as I understand it, is, is basically this, it's, it would be, under the staff recommendations, it would be A, which is this, the exemption of SEQA, B, which is to approve the...
Well, with amendment to the budget.
Yeah, with the amendment to the budget on the 1920 as a possibility, I'm not sure how to phrase that, but on the $40,000, it would be at least withheld for the moment. C, which would be the, the adoption of the resolution with, with the creation of an ad hoc committee added on to the resolution. And then D would be with the scope that we just referenced. Mr. Harp, is that clear enough? And then D would be the...
Not approved.
I guess it would be, have the ad hoc come back and make a recommendation on whether to approve within 60 days? Okay, if that's...
And then no D as currently written.
Well, I guess, I guess D would be the, D would be a callback, right? So it would be a, it would be a, we'd ask the, we'd ask our ad hoc committee, whoever that ends up being, to come back and make a recommendation on whether to, whether to adopt, or whether to expend the $40,000, allocate the $40,000, I suppose is the better phrase. And if we did that within 60 days, then that would, that wouldn't be a study session item, that would actually have to be an agenda item. Is there anything about that that provides, that gives City Attorney Hartburn?
So I'm just going to repeat back to you, so you'd be doing A, B, and C, and then you'd be forming a, a working group, an ad hoc committee of council members to make a recommendation regarding item D, but it will not be part of this motion.
Yes.
Who made the second? Yeah. That acceptable?
And Ms. Brenner, do you have a comment?
My only comment is that this, to me, seems to be a way to give the Corona del Mar business community the opportunity to find a way to move forward under the Mar business community the opportunity to find a way to move forward under the 1994 laws. It doesn't mean that when we come back, the council necessarily will vote for it, but it means this is an opportunity for them to continue.
Absolutely. And this is how they could do it, and we could perhaps set up some permitted...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a step back. I guess they're actually, they've fully allocated their entire budget, which is the item B that you mentioned. So they're going to have to rework that. There's no, there's no real issue with continuing this whole thing one meeting. They'll have to rework the budget, though, if the $40,000 isn't there.
Less than 40,000.
Just as a legal matter, do they have, do we have to approve their budget at this meeting, or does, can it be at the next one?
No, last, last year, we did it later in time. So it doesn't have to be at this meeting.
Oh, then I will make a substitute motion of a, of a continuance of this item to the following meeting. And I think actually we ought to take it up at the next meeting where we have the public, the public hearing. So I would recommend actually having this item come up after the, have this be a, not a consent calendar item at the next meeting, but actual open session item after the public hearing on the, I apologize. Let me back up for just a moment, actually, now that I'm realizing. Is this item coming back on the next meeting as a public hearing?
It would if you approved, if you approved the resolution, it would come back. As a public hearing at the next meeting.
So, okay. Okay. All right. I apologize. I need to, I need to modify this a bit because this is a little complicated procedurally. All right. I move...
You'd have to approve the resolution tonight. You had to approve their budget and the resolution tonight in order to bring it back next time for a public hearing.
Wow.
And then, and then to adjust the budget?
Can I just make a comment? The city council does have the authority to amend the budget, and so you're amending it by withholding the 40,000 for now. If, if the intent is possibly down the line after ad hoc committee review, if they recommend to fund the 40,000, then the budget will be whole. Otherwise, we can look at the budget and maybe take something out of the budget. You are, you do have authority to amend what their, their scope for the new year is.
We could do that this evening.
That's true, but you have to figure out how, where to take the money from, because they've got it all allocated.
Right. Yeah, I was gonna say, that sets them at a disadvantage, because if we did that, we'd be putting them at a budget deficit going into a public hearing, and I don't want to do that to them.
Or we can bring the budget back with the next, to the next meeting.
I would suggest, I'm sorry, what, what are you saying?
The budget has to be approved first before you do the resolution of intention.
Okay.
We have to approve the budget tonight?
Well, you don't have to do it tonight. You could do it all at the next meeting, but you have to approve the budget before you do the resolution of intention.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe we should continue this to the end of the meeting. Maybe Barry, Barry can take a look at his budget. Bernie, I'm sorry, Bernie.
No, he needs, he needs his board. So I'm gonna, then here's, now that I'm realizing how, how this needs to be parsed out and timed, I move a continuance of this item to the next meeting to be held before the public hearing on the, on this, with the caveat that I also need to adopt a resolution calling for the public hearing, correct?
Yeah. So if you, so if you just continue this item to the next, next meeting, then if at that meeting you adopted the resolution and approved a budget, then the public hearing would happen at the second meeting in June.
Following meeting. We're, we're fine in terms of time. We've done this since July before, so I don't, we're not under any, it's a fiscal year matter. I'm comfortable with that. Why are you hesitating?
No, I'm only hesitating because...
Yeah, if they go past June...
We have two meetings in June, so I think that this would still work before the, the bid expires, June 30th, if we...
And so basically, we would be asking, if we continued this, we would, we would continue it with the public message of remove the 40,000 from your budget and bring it back.
Come back with a budget that reflects that.
So Bernie would have, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I called him Barry, but Bernie would need to go back to his board and approve a new budget without that $40,000.
And then come back to us at the, at the end of the month, June.
Come back to the June 11th meeting to you, so that both bids can hold, I'm referring to the Restaurant Association too. I'm assuming it's going to be the same thing. Both bids can hold a special meeting to review the budget and come, come up with a new budget application.
And then we vote on those budgets, or the vote on the resolution at the June 25th meeting?
The, the 11th. And then they would schedule the public hearing for the following meeting in June, the 25th.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm comfortable. Okay. Then I, I move continuance of this item to the June 11th meeting with that very public message of remove $40,000 from the budget with the understanding that it may come back, but not, not in the initial adoption.
All right. Ms. Brenner, did you have a comment?
What does that do to the actions that we had requested in the first motion?
I think what that does is it moves it to the next meeting, so...
We'll bring it up in the June 11th meeting.
So that means nothing happens toward their restructuring during the, in the meantime?
Because they're still in their same entity until we revise the budget.
Right. Because what I don't want to do, I don't want to, I don't want to tie their hand on the, on the public hearing, because if we just remove the $40,000 right now out, we either are just deciding what they're going to not spend it on, and that's not really appropriate for us to decide, or we are putting them in a deficit, and that's also not appropriate. So, so that's why if, for us to be able to do this, we need to give them the autonomy to at least make that call on what to do with the 40,000 expenditure. And so then it, it comes back to us at the next meeting.
So then at the next meeting, when we do that, we would make the motion that Diane made originally to restructure.
Ad hoc study and to, to look at it.
I would second, then, your alternate motion.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I admittedly did not understand that if, that we needed to adopt the resolution in order to call the meeting and then, in order, anyway, it's...
All right, do you want to restate it just for the sake of clarity?
No, this is just a continuance motion. I'm, I'm...
That's all it is, is a continuance. All right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
We have some young adults in the audience, and this we have to look forward to if you decide to get into public office. So thanks for that.
But the message to this bid is to come back to the continued item on June 11th with a revised budget. Okay. That is the current motion, and we've seconded, I'm sorry? All right. And so let's vote.
The motion carries unanimously 7-0 to continue the item.
All right. Same thing on item number six. Mayor Protam?
Same issue. Do we have anyone from the restaurant bid here? No, I assumed it was, oh, there you go. Thank you. Awesome.
Hi, my name is George Naderbein, and I've had the honor of serving as president the last two years of the Newport Beach Restaurant Association. A few of you have come to a couple of our meetings, and I'm just here to say, I hope we don't get, with the highest level of respect to Corona Del Mar, that we're not lumped together. I think it's a different situation and a different bid. And I respect your motion that, not the motion, the, the notion that it's a government-induced situation as far as them paying their assessments and things like that, but we've done an incredible job of educating the 487, I think, eating, dining establishments in the city about the benefit of being a member of the Restaurant Association. And we've collected, I think, 93, 94% this year, which is the highest level ever as far as the assessment. And we personally go out and talk to the other seven, six or seven percent about the benefits so that they understand it as well. So I think we're operating as efficiently and the best we ever have. So I hope we can renew the bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just also make the comment that by no means is this intended to suggest that either business improvement district organization is, is not appropriate. I mean, I strongly support, I personally, and I believe the council members up here joined me, we strongly support business improvement districts. I personally can say that my understanding of the 1994 law, while it has a little bit of transitional steps to go forward, really validates the value-added proposition that the business improvement districts offer, or the restaurant district offers to your members. So I think it's a wonderful concept, and in the wonderful wisdom of our state legislature in 1994, to create this opportunity for our businesses and property owners to form self-government in their village-defined perimeter to improve their area, to clean the sidewalks, promote their restaurants, use their revenues as they see fit, as their board sees fit. This is business-producing, so it's not punitive in any way. It may sound, because this is transitional, but I support the Business Improvement District, because I've seen the success in many cities, and I've spoken publicly before, witnessing the formation and the success of three districts in the city of Pasadena, where I lived for many years, in Old Town Pasadena, the Playhouse District of Pasadena, and Lake Avenue District, which were all floundering areas of economic depredation and today are thriving parts of that city, because the local business owners are in control of their own destiny. So, or local restaurant owners. The Restaurant Association is phenomenal in their success. Do not take this in any suggestion that we don't have confidence in the whole concept of dine Newport Beach and all that you do in our community. It's tremendously valuable. I personally think this structure will allow you to grow even more. That, that is my belief, based on experiences in other cities. So are there any other comments up here? We'll take it to the public on item number six. Anybody want to come up and talk about this? All right. Seeing none, we'll come back to the dais. Any other comments up here? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the same motion and continue the next meeting with a instruction that the 40,000 be revised in the budget.
Second. And we're continuing this item to June 11th. All right. Any comments? Let's vote.
Councilmember Duffy, thank you. With Councilmember Muldoon voting no, the motion carries 6-1.
All right, what's the next item on consent?
No more.
No more? We're finished with the consent calendar. Great. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Please come forward. Public comments on non-agenda items. Mr. Bress, this is where you...
Hello, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much. It's so great to be here and see government work. You guys are awesome. Thank you for your service. And, okay, so I just came tonight in order to get this on the record. As you know, we're dealing with the Board of Supervisors that are about to vote in regards to what happens to John Wayne Airport, and we know how impactful John Wayne Airport is on our beautiful city. So one of the things that I would just like to get across, and I did send you all emails today, was that I don't see any documentation or verbiage from the city to the Board of Supervisors that basically addresses a report that I'm advocating for in order to solve, using some type of technology to meet the demand and growth of what we're dealing with here in California and in the county. We know there is going to be, the report that John Wayne Airport did acknowledges that there's going to be growth and demand for larger private jets and a new business model of fractional jet ownership. But what we've been advocating for is great. You've confirmed that there are these new demands. We can't just put our heads in the sand and deny that it's happening. It's true. But our position is that John Wayne Airport is big enough, and we don't want that to impact the growth with John Wayne Airport. So I had emailed you about the Boring Company. It's an Elon Musk company. As you know, OCTA has already approved a above-ground streetcar, and that streetcar is going to go four miles in Santa Ana, and it's going to cost $400 million. That's a lot of money. That's $100 million per mile. So we could actually use Elon Musk's Boring Company, which is $10 million a mile. It's one-tenth the cost. And for that same amount, we could go from John Wayne Airport all the way out to Ontario International Airport with a tunnel system via the Arctic Transportation Center that they built in Anaheim. And what that does is then gives us the ability for people who are in Fullerton, Brea, Anaheim, Yorba Linda, that area, they wouldn't have to come down to John Wayne Airport. They could go to Anaheim-Artic and get on this tunnel shuttle to go to Ontario. Ontario is one of the fastest-growing airports in the United States right now, and they have a tremendous footprint. They have room for growth. So using this type of technology and at this cost would get us the distance that we could then get to either interconnect to Anaheim, to Ontario, and/or from John Wayne, where you would clear TSA. And instead of going to the gate, you would go downstairs to the tunnel shuttle, and you could be over to Long Beach Airport in 12 minutes. We also know we have to build five new airports in order to meet the growth from 40 million to 50 million. So let's start planning, and let's get some grit and some vision and start to think about these things. So in closing, I'm just asking that you guys, as the city of Newport Beach, get some verbiage back to the Board of Supervisors that they consider creating a report and how we deal with this demand and growth going forward. As, as we know, we don't want John Wayne to expand. John Wayne Airport is big enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll ask Mr. City Attorney, could you explain how we're responding to the EIR, and that's really what frames our comments, notwithstanding the fact that your ideas are visionary, but in this particular action with the Board of Supervisors, we have to confine it to the existing EIR. But it doesn't mean that we can't communicate that at a future date, because good creative ideas.
Yeah. And I think there was an, an addendum item that I included on the second follow-up email to you guys. I think that's part of your charter, right, within your scope and purview, to accept additional items that are specific to trying to solve problems for you guys.
Yeah. Let me have the Mr. City Attorney just comment on that, just to inform our process.
Yeah, I don't think I could say it much better than you did, but in essence, we're looking at the General Aviation Improvement Program and the environmental documents associated with that, and commenting on, on those items. And the focus really is there and not on some of the other ideas, which are good ideas about perhaps getting people to, to go out to Ontario as opposed to using John Wayne Airport. But we're really focused on the EIR right now.
And we have to be. But anyway, that's okay. We'll, we'll...
But I made my point, right? So, okay.
You were heard.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Any other comments on non-agenda items?
Good evening. Going from the BID conversations to this, it was like, wow. And I'm going to try to wake up and bring to my little comment here. As I've talked to you a couple times so far...
Why don't you repeat your naming?
Sandra Ayers, Newport Heights. My focus recently has been on the new appointments coming forward for the Planning Commissioners. And, and my focus that coming from you down to the Planning Commission makes a huge difference in the decisions that do go forward and changes, whatever, that are made in our city. Decisions that are made, we all accept and we understand, people should understand, it doesn't always come out that way, that, you know, decisions by the Planning Commission cannot be bent to favor community opinion, that the rights of property owners need to be respected, and whatever the laws are that we currently have, that's the way it is. And on the other hand, though, rules should not be bent to favor variances against those rules. You know, if we have variances given without cause, then that is against the rules, against the laws that are set. Rule of law must be, must be recognized, whatever, equally, must be delivered equally for citizenry to have confidence in our government, in our democracy. So for example, I'll just give you a quick example. Last week at the Planning Commission, because we do try to go and we do attend and we do pay attention, there was a request, there was public outcry on a size of a building. I think it was demonstrated, and I acknowledged in my comments, that the person's right to build to the height that was given was there. They had the right. But variances were given on the back of the building. Comments were made by the Commissioners and by others. Well, they were so nice not to go higher or request higher, that they could have gone higher. Well, okay, that's nice, but, you know, they could have. That's their right. But the hardships, the variances that they asked for were not due to any hardship or reason or exception. It was because they wanted a covered porch and they wanted some dormers. And again, that takes a... takes away the confidence of people. And I'm just, really, I am coming as a concerned citizen, asking you to please, as our representatives, our elected representatives who then go and appoint these Commissioners, who I'm sure are all trying to do a good job, but they need guidance. And the guidance should come that all rules need to be given equitably. And that's how we have confidence, and that's how we're going to, you're going to diminish this kind of uproar you're feeling from the citizenry. The person, one of the people asked for a continuance because people were rumbling. Well, you know, rumbling is there, but it can be diminished if we ask to put things equally. So, as we're coming forward on appointing these new Commissioners coming up, it's a perfect opportunity to revisit this kind of thinking, this kind of direction from our city council.
Thank you very much. All right. Next public comment, please.
Hi, I'm Marsha Kendall. I'm now doing the ping pong ball back to the airport. I also am a very concerned citizen in Newport, not knowing what behind-the-scenes accomplishments have been occurring with the GAIP. I feel this expansion issue and the airport in general is the most pressing issue in Newport Beach. I feel all of you should be paying attention to it, all of you. There is so much at stake. As you know, the county has found a JWA expansion loophole with the GAIP. I feel this is a monumental moment for Newport, just like Newport Beach had in 1985. Another monumental moment for Newport Beach was the 2002 El Toro vote when Newport Beach lost against the South Counties due to not rallying enough votes to win. Therefore, John Wayne Airport began to grow to where it is now, at maximum capacity, with noise and particle pollution spewing over all the cities. Supervisor Bartlett mentioned that she wanted a healthy and happy county at the last Board of Supervisor meeting. In my opinion, she was not receptive, and she appeared close-minded to what the many homeowners said that day. Newport Beach and all the corridor cities need to present their position as unified in this new monumental moment. No kidding. I trust that you are calling on all the mayors and council members of those cities so we have a happy, healthy county. I ran across a quote from Byron Pulsifer saying, quote, "To be smart is to use every talent to project into each and every decision while understanding the point at which you may need more and experience, council." This is my message to you. I watched Mayor Dixon be very forthright at the Board of Supervisor meeting, and there was a time in the second session that she had to engage and process very quickly what Supervisor Doe was proposing in seconds. She approached the podium and was handling astutely an answer from Newport's perspective. She had Aaron Harp and Tom Edwards sitting next to her, but there were some minutes where she recognized the quick need to jump into action as Newport's representative before she had time to consult them for extra guidance. If you had had an outside specialized aviation attorney who the city could rely on, they would have given her quick counsel at the same time, and they would have been Johnny on the spot with her. She did a great job. As you negotiate this proposal with the county, it is vital to bringing in all the expertise that you can muster so all Ts are crossed and all Is are dotted. There is too much to lose for all of Newport. I'm counting on you, as we all are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Come forward.
Brown, will you be able to please put that up? And I'll start my three minutes as soon as that letter is on the screen for the council. Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Denise Oberman. I spoke to the council to address actually a very serious problem of equity that I am facing, rather, an inequity. The city, it's been now several years ago, through a series of mistakes and failures to properly administer its permitting and construction, gave my property to someone else. I've attempted over these last several years to work with the city to resolve this. The city was failing to act, refused to act. And after my last presentation at the city council, where I asked the council to direct the staff to take action to remove this encroaching wall, I received a very perplexing letter, which is on the screen, and which the council and the public have copies of, dated April 18th. This letter was not only perplexing because it was unclear, but it misdated the regulations of the city. And furthermore, it suggests that there aren't any regulations related to site setbacks or to fire clearance. So, that is obviously not the case. The city regularly enacts and administers side setback regulations and as well as fire clearance requirements. So, in any event, this letter was sent to me, a total surprise, claiming to be at my request, which I did not, that there was a site visit, which I had no notice of, by the fire marshal and the building inspector. And I had serious questions to try to understand both the content and the intent of this letter. So, in response to what the letter says at the conclusion, if you have any questions, call me, I tried repeatedly to contact the fire marshal and the building inspector. No answer. So then, I contacted the senior staff, specifically the Community Development Director and the City Manager, to, in conjunction with the city attorney, arrange a meeting whereby myself and my attorney could get with the senior staff to ask our questions and to better understand what the nature of this letter was. So, we had a meeting. That meeting was on May 15th. And at that letter, some very disturbing things occurred. My attorney attempted to present the evidence that we had and that our experts had compiled, which showed what the series codes and ordinances were, to show that the city could in fact cure this problem. So, we were completely stonewalled by the city manager, and specifically the city attorney, who said, "We're not going to discuss this. The matter has been concluded," closed his files, would not let us speak, and refused to answer my questions, other than to tell me that the staff members that conducted the site visit had not gone onto my property. Let me tell you the significance of this matter.
You need to wrap it up and...
I will wrap it up, Mayor Dixon. I have been permanently impaired. My property is impaired by what has happened unless the city acts and cures this. The city created this condition. The city can cause the cure of this action very simply, and I'm asking again, please do this before I'm forced to resort to other remedies. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next public comment.
Good evening. My name is Sue DeVorek. I live in the Bluffs. I would first like to thank our city council members who showed up at the May 7th Board of Supervisors meeting. Councilwoman Brenner, Councilman Hurdman, Mayor Dixon. I'd also like to thank Councilman Muldoon for his assistance with airport matters, but I especially want to call out Mayor Dixon and thank you on behalf of residents for standing up for residents of Newport Beach and fighting for us. We appreciate it very much. With regard to the GAIP, I support a resolution that best protects the residents and limits the flights, operations, and facilities for the GAIP. It is my position that the city should retain the guidance of an expert with established expertise in airport infrastructure planning and design, given the intricacies of the GAIP, which includes but is not limited to allocating parcel layouts, limiting slots and ramp space for transient planes, determining the actual square footage of the facilities, assessing whether flights or aircraft can be legally capped, and determining hangar sites. It's critical that the square footage of the GA jet facilities is constrained, which may also be an important component in limiting transient jet usage. Although I am under the impression that limiting the use of JWA by transient jets can be partially achieved through the eventual configuration of the airport's FBOs, hangars, ramps, and slots, this is clearly a consideration that is well outside of our collective knowledge base and requires the evaluation by an expert with experience in airport infrastructure, planning, and design. And I thank you for taking the time to study this matter further. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please. Come forward. Any public comments on non-agenda items?
No.
No. Thank you, though, for asking. All right. One comment coming forward?
Good evening. Pat Banus, Babo Island. I just want to say, 1985, when this settlement agreement was made, Mr. Harp, were you the attorney that signed it? Who was it?
I wasn't born yet.
Yeah, you look too young. Whose signature was that?
It was probably Bob Burnham. He was, I believe, the city attorney.
I saw Harp somewhere on there.
I've signed some of them.
Yeah. Okay. All these, all the city council members fought, along with the citizens, to get this passed in 1985. This airport was not built for jets. The runway is 5,700 feet. LAX is 9,000 and 12,000 feet. These pilots white knuckled to get out of here. And here we want to put double the amount of jets in there. Next gen comes in, and the reason why we have so much noise governing our houses is because they have two lanes, one for the big jets and a higher one for the small ones. And those big jets are almost breaking our space of our houses. And it stinks like black soot. And we can't live with that, none of us. And we're not going away. We ask that the city, all of you, you, county council, back us up and get this thing back to where it was before next gen came in, because that noise is driving everyone nuts, and so is the soot. Please take this seriously.
Thank you. I think we've been working very hard for the last several years and spending a lot of money to take this seriously. For our residents, we are united on this project. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor Dixon, City Council. I just wanted to address somehow permits are given to renegade contractors, of which happened next door to me. They came in and demoed the structure, which cracked my foundation, has cracked my house, cracked my wall. And I had one of the top renowned forensic structural engineers, Tarek Mokhtar, from Emerald Bay, come to my house, and he said, "When they excavate the concrete, it will take down my house." The contractor did not have a license. The civil engineer license expired in 2012. And the geotechnical company's license expired. It's 1721 Kings Road. I can't afford a catastrophic event. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Dixon, Councilmembers, Mayor Protem O'Neill. My name is Max Johnson, and I'm a resident of the Baboap Peninsula community. I'm speaking tonight in regard to something that I witnessed firsthand yesterday, walking the Baboap Pier. For the last several weeks and several months, I've had a lot of residents and neighbors of mine communicate frustration around seeing women and men experiencing homelessness at the base of the Baboap Pier. And being that homelessness is a complicated problem that many of our cities are facing at the moment, what I witnessed yesterday was a member, a man who was experiencing homelessness, going through his items. And unfortunately, I saw some drug paraphernalia, so I did contact dispatch and just let them know. But it made me starting, or it made me think of the junior guards program that's going to be starting here pretty soon this summer. And I just wanted to mention it. I'm not sure or aware if our police department or Officer Yem and the department has kind of a plan going forward. There were members, or men and women, at the base near the bike racks where junior guards, in the morning and afternoon groups, just jump over constantly to get to the restrooms and water fountains. And yesterday, with the amount of traffic that was there, there were kids that were barefoot, just jumping over this bike rack that this man, he had needles in this one bag, and they were in a bag. And then he had a glass jar of marijuana, but he was going through his items, including cash and other miscellaneous items, and wasn't engaging anyone, wasn't causing a problem. But it just brought light to something that I think, if we don't already have a game plan going forward, I know it's a sensitive subject in terms of removing people that are experiencing homelessness. That's not something that we, as a department, can just do. And our officers have to have probable cause to search their items. But I thought I'd bring it before council and just, I want to mention it so that a kid, a young child in our city doesn't unfortunately step on something or injures themselves, or just with interactions. I know that there are residents that have had negative interactions with some of these people. So, I'm not trying to stigmatize these people that are experiencing something enormously challenging, and it's a complex problem. But I want to hope that maybe we have a game plan as to the influx of all these children coming up for the summer programs, what we're going to do about this. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Max. We do have a plan. I don't know if we do. So, we're very conscious of the fact that 1,500 young people will be in that same area in a matter of weeks. So, thank you. Appreciate your comments. Any other public comments? Please come forward. Seeing none. All right. We'll go into our public hearing. Item number 15 is via Lito Sood, residential dock reconfiguration, the appeal of the Harbor Commission's decision. And Mr. Miller, Mr. Webb, want to report?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor. Mr. Miller will be giving this item tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I think we're going to announce any ex-party contacts before we get started on the item.
Thank you. So, just take a moment. Mr. Avery, do you have any? Mr. Duffield?
Yes, I spoke with the applicant about this briefly.
Okay. Mr. Muldoon?
I received an email from Mr. Stacy. I called him. There was no one in the office. I think it was late afternoon. I was not able to speak to anyone about this matter other than his emails.
Ms. Brenner? Only the emails that we've received. Mr. Hurdman?
Just the email, but I've not spoken to anyone about this.
A mayor, Protem.
I echo that.
And I met with the applicant, and I received an email from the applicant's attorney. All right. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the city council, I have a brief presentation to go over this set of facts. And I know that the appellant also has a presentation to give as well via their council.
Okay.
We're here this evening to talk about 939 via Lito Sood, which is a residential dock reconfiguration, an appeal of the Harbor Commission's decision. Few aerial shots of where the project location is. You can see the blue asterisk over the property. It's directly adjacent to the anchorage in the Newport Harbor Yacht Club mooring field. A little bit of a zoomed-up shot here. You might see a couple different numbers of how far away, slightly different numbers of how far away the project is to the anchorage. And it's just because, it depends on where you take your line. We, for the purposes of this city council meeting, we took the measurement from the property line, which is slightly different from where I took it during the Harbor Commission meeting, which is why the number at that meeting was slightly lower. Regardless, it is 256 feet away from the anchorage boundary. This is a close-up view of the relationship to the lines in the harbor. And I'm going to deviate just for just a few seconds here and talk about our harbor lines, just as maybe a refresher and to let people know what exactly they mean. This is a snapshot of a portion of the harbor that allows me to easily talk... This is a snapshot of a portion of the harbor that allows me to easily talk about each line and what it means. The orange line represents the bulkhead line. The bulkhead line does not necessarily always follow the physical bulkhead in Newport Harbor. And this is evidenced by the bulkhead line, which is out in the water on the right-hand side of your screen, and my arrow is pointing. Interestingly, all the water that is landward of the orange bulkhead line is considered private waterways. And incidentally, we don't charge a pier fee for those docks that are landward of the bulkhead line. But certainly, the docks that are bayward of the bulkhead line, those are within our tidelines. The yellow line represents the pierhead line, and that's generally the line where docks are allowed to be built in Newport Harbor. But there have been exceptions per our previous council policy H1. And then the last line is the red line. And the red line is called the project line, and that is basically the area that the federal government can dredge from project line to project line, as I'm working on right now and in the coming years. So just to give you some perspective on what those harbor lines are, now we go back to the appellant's property, which is the slanted U-shaped dock. And I thought this would be appropriate to put up that this was the last approval for the dock to be built at that property. This is from February of 1998. And as you can see, the red circle denotes the pierhead line. And our council policy says that no floats or docks can be built beyond the pierhead line. And in this drawing, in this approved drawing, it was permitted to be built directly up against the pierhead line and not further. As we see, though, going back, it was built a few feet beyond the pierhead line for reasons I do not know.
Is it permitted?
It was only permitted to be built to this, to the pierhead line. When it was actually built, it was built, and I have a drawing exhibit later that will show you exactly how far it was built out. When you ask if it was permitted, it was approved during, you know, when they constructed it and finalized. I don't think measurements are precisely taken, as you might imagine.
And at that time in 1992, it was not the current applicant. Is that correct?
That is correct. On the very bottom, sometimes these drawings reflect the owner at the time, most of the times they do. And you can see that the applicant's name, at least on this sheet, says Robert Wilmington. Flipping to the next slide, this is the proposal to build out beyond the pierhead line. I kept the pierhead line yellow because that's what it was in the previous, when I was talking about the harbor lines. And the applicant is proposing to build his float 16 feet beyond the pierhead line, which, according to our council policy H1, it says that piers and floats may not extend beyond the pierhead line unless approved by council policy. And then it goes on to say that it, council or Harbor Commission can allow extensions beyond the pierhead line if a determination is made that it will not negatively impact navigation, adjacent property owners, and existing harbor uses. The Harbor Commission reviewed this back in February and as an appeal to our denial of the proposal. And the Harbor Commission upheld that denial because they felt that it would impact the harbor uses. In their words, "It would have a lasting effect on navigation." If you recall, it's fairly close, it's 200, well, it's not fairly close, but it's 256 feet away from the anchorage, and it's close to the Newport Harbor Yacht Club mooring field. And there's a channel there that provides the main channel on back towards Marina Park and the Rhine Channel. For context, I thought it would be interesting or important, rather, to give some numbers here of the current dock configuration. And I, please don't pay attention to the other numbers, they're just telling how long the sides are. But the most important numbers, at least in my mind, are the 21-foot number, which represents the width of the current slip, and 9.5 feet represents the distance that the maximum side is overhanging beyond the pierhead line. Now, the reason why I circled the 21-feet overhang is because by our current rules, you are allowed to extend beyond the end of your finger, which the fingers, what I mean by that are the finger floats that extend past the pierhead line. You're allowed to extend 21 feet past the end of the finger. And I tried to illustrate that here, and it's not exactly perfect because you're dealing with two round, you're dealing with a rounded corner of the pierhead line, and then also the dock is slanted. So by my calculations, I came up that currently, a vessel could hypothetically be 80 approximately, plus or minus a foot or two, 82 feet beyond the end of the fingers, which is beyond the project line. Now, I say hypothetically because it's virtually impossible to have a 21-foot slip and have 21-foot boat. It just doesn't work. You can't shoehorn a boat into a slip. You have to have space for fenders. But I was just giving a worst-case example.
Excuse me. Could you just go back to the nine and a half? Where does, is that in the current policy? The nine and a half?
No. I'm just illustrating current conditions. And this was, this was how it was built back in 1998. It wasn't permitted to be built beyond the pierhead line, but this is how it was built. Now, granted, back in 1998, they likely didn't have, well, I don't think they did have as robust a GIS system and analysts as we do now, who can overlay, create layers like we can now. But that's not an excuse. You can still measure, but that's sometimes when you're doing construction out on the water, it's, sometimes it's not as precise as it could be on land.
Chris, could I ask a question?
Yes.
You're talking, the 21 feet, you're referencing the beam of a boat, right? They can, they can go out their beam. So the beam, and this wouldn't occur here, the beam had, would have to be less than 21 feet.
It would.
But theoretically, it's possible to go all the way in there, and you can, you can then hang out your beam, whatever it is, past the end of your dock. Is that correct?
Correct. You can, in this case, if the beam was 21 feet, you can hang out 21 feet beyond the end of the fingers.
And so if we allowed the dock to go out to the proposed new addition, you could go out at least probably 20 feet beyond that, right?
I have that in my next slide.
Okay. Sorry.
That's okay. So this is, this is the drawing right here, and it shows that the dock is proposed to be built 16 feet beyond the pierhead line. You'll notice that at the top, in between the two fingers, it says that the distance of, the width of this slip is 23 feet. So you use the same logic that I just described in the current situation, and you can extend out by our current rules 23 feet beyond the end of the fingers, if this was allowed. And I can show what that looks like. That would look something very approximate to where those green dots are with the new configuration.
I'm trying to understand where, is that in the policy, or is that just in practice?
The, our beam width rule is part of our municipal code. It says that boats may extend beyond the fingers by their beam.
So that is in the code?
Yes.
Okay.
So in the proposed, in the proposal, this is what it potentially, in a worst-case hypothetical situation, this is where the boat could extend to, the green dashed line there. Now, an interesting thing to contemplate might be that if you look at the other floats that are in the surrounding neighbor, surrounding floats, four or five on either side, they also have U-shaped floats. And they also, if they had larger boats, could extend their beam width beyond their fingers also, right today. In this picture, we don't see any larger boats, but that doesn't mean that they couldn't buy one tomorrow and extend out further than they are now. You also notice that some of these floats on either side currently do extend beyond the yellow pierhead line. And it's just occurred over the years. I can speak to 933 via Lido Sued, which is immediately to the left of the appellant's property. That was brought to the Harbor Commission back in 2003, and the Harbor Commission allowed that float to be built beyond the pierhead line.
So if it's permitted, why did the Harbor Commission deny it?
That's a very good question. The, we treat each, each address as separate, and this was done in 2000, the 933 was done in 2003, and we're so many years later. So Dave Webb was just suggesting that I reiterate that the current dock, as it stands, is technically not permitted to extend beyond the yellow pierhead line. But that's how it was built.
Okay. But it, what? You say technically not permitted, but you just, two minutes ago, said it could have been permitted.
I'm sorry. The current float that we're looking at right now was only permitted to be built to the pierhead line. But during construction, they built it farther.
I know, but we're talking about now and going beyond that, and that is technically correct, to go to the little green dots that you have.
That would be, the purpose of that exhibit was just to illustrate how far a boat could extend out into the channel if the current proposal was permitted by the City Council this evening.
I see. Okay.
They're just clarifying. Your policy H1 does not allow it currently for the floats to go past the pierhead line.
But the boat could.
The boat could, but the dock cannot. And the dock adjacent to it, which you can see on that picture there, was permitted many years ago, and the Harbor Commission, for whatever reason, if the policy was different, allowed that one to go forward. There is a change. There's, H1 says you can't go past the pierhead line.
But H1 also allows for the Harbor Commissioner, the City Council, to allow exceptions based on not impeding navigation, the neighbors, or the three criteria in H1. Negatively impact navigation, property owners, or existing harbor uses.
Do you want to speak, Mr. Duffield?
So how many residents on Lido Sued do you think have built their docks past the yellow line?
Well, I have a slide that I can show that shows a portion of Lido Sued. So this, this is Lido Sued, and if you can see, most of those floats have been built beyond the pierhead line. However, to be fair, our previous council policy H1 allowed floats to be built beyond the pierhead line by 20 feet.
Chris?
Yes.
Seems to me that part of the reason they're all going beyond the pierhead line is because they're seeking relief from the shoaling against the seawall. When you look at a photo like this, or the photo of the turn of Lido Island, the sand has been silting up for years, and they haven't dredged. And then just, it's much easier just to bring the dock out further. If they had deep water up to their bulkhead, this wouldn't be an issue, but the docks would be up close to the bulkhead, like there are many places of the harbor. The bow of the boat, when it's all the way in, might be four feet away from the bulkhead. And then the boat enjoys a long slip that's not past the pierhead line. Does that make sense? That's got to be why this is happening, because you can see, you know, just the sand there.
I have another example of that on Balboa Island, where you can see the sand, and it's much more graduated there.
Otherwise, you just can't really park your boat unless you dredge, and you get a permit to dredge, and you take care of whatever structural issues might happen to your seawall if you dredge too close, that kind of thing, which is a lot of work and expense to do. It seems to be a reason why this is happening, one of the reasons.
There are other places in the harbor as well that this is happening. So I think it's difficult for Harbor Commission because they don't have the tools to work with this. Obviously, these, all these, every single home is in violation.
Have we done an audit or analysis of every single home on the harbor with a dock that's on the water? And what, how many are in compliance? I mean, we've got visual examples here, but actual audit to know how many properties the docks are within the pierhead and those that are without, that are outside it? Did the Harbor Commission request that kind of study?
No, they did not. However, our previous version of council policy H1 had four pages of delineations as to where you could build out beyond the pierhead line. And so it was just a matter of looking at those areas. And I think I've done a study, I don't remember the exact numbers, but a significant portion of the harbor does extend out past the pierhead line because our previous council policy allowed that.
So what was the point of change, why was the harbor, what was the Harbor Commission's intent to rein this back in?
Because they, they want to make sure that they're concerned, and I don't want to speak for the Harbor Commission directly, but I, but we are, they are concerned about impacts to navigation, vessel, vessel creep is a wrong word, but worst-case scenario of having like a catamaran come into a large slip, and it's big and boxy, and it can overhang a lot if you apply the overhang rule. There's a couple of different scenarios that, that could negatively impact the harbor and the channels.
I could take the liberty, Chris, too. And a few commissions I attended, I think trying to get the genie back in the box, as you look at this slide, there's a navigable channel there, and you actually see a boat in it. And this is a rather narrow one, but you also see a lot of boats sticking way past the pierhead line. It makes it a navigational challenge in there. Obviously, this one's narrow, but the original intent was to have all the piers and boats within the pierhead line. And over the years, we have allowed that to creep out. It's not, it's not any different from a lot of harbors. They have the same problem. Bigger boats get bought, they push out. And then you get this problem where you have to, two boats coming down, they have to navigate around a crowd. You've got a mooring field on the other side that's crowding it. So it depends where you're at, but I think that was the intent, is what I'm hearing, to try to get those channels freed up. But there's a lot of pre-existing conditions, obviously, from prior policies.
Mr. Avery, do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, this is a great example here of, of the necessity to keep, keep to the pierhead line, because anyone that's gone down this channel on a weekend day knows when you've got cross, when you've got traffic that's meeting, it's really pretty difficult, and it could easily get in a problem. And Lido Island, the case we're talking about, is quite different. The channel's much wider. But there's another issue about this, and this is the part, and I think the Harbor Commission was referring to, from a safety standpoint, but also about a public's access to water standpoint, other uses. And so kayakers, there's, you know, a myriad of boats in the harbor on a weekend day, and they should have maximum enjoyment of the surface of the water to the degree possible. So if, if the docks keep creeping out everywhere in the harbor, it reduces the field, if you will, just like a playing field for just having fun in a park. You're building a wall out, essentially, and people can't go past that. I mean, they can technically, legally, they can. But in reality, the way people use their boats, a guy could kayak, and often does, within a few feet of the docks or the boats along the shoreline. But if he's, if a dock has suddenly moved out 15 feet, he's got to go around that. Is that difficult? Is that dangerous? No. But he's lost that portion of the water. That portion of the water's been basically given over to whoever's got that boat. Not in a legal sense, but just in a reality sense of just the boat parking there. So that's another consideration that I think might have weighed on the Harbor Commission as well. But you can't, no one can say a channel is safe or it isn't. That channel off the island and off the Newport Harbor Yacht Club moorings and the anchorage is 250 feet wide. Is that wide enough? You know, it just depends on who you are during the day and how crowded it happens to be at any given moment. But no one can say that it's safe, and no one can say that it's really unsafe, just like this channel here. Many would say it's an unsafe channel, it's so narrow, but we can't say that. So that's really not a part of this in that sense. But what we're talking about is... But what we're talking about is, is we have to parse this, and as, as Duffy has said, we really need to do some kind of a survey of the harbor and kind of take an accounting of where these problems exist, and sort of try to come up with something that makes sense. Because what we don't want to happen is have the Harbor Commission filled with people coming and wanting, having to make these calls, and it comes to us, and we've got to make these calls. We've got to do something more discreet for different areas around the harbor, it seems to me.
Uh, Duffy, Mr. Duffield?
Correct, and one of the interesting things, this is very complicated, but if you look at the slide, it's up there now, it's Balbo Island. We did a lot of outreach. I was a subcommittee chairman for seven years on the boundaries for the mooring, mooring fields. And the outreach that we did along these narrow channels was very interesting to me. Nobody wanted us to make them wider. They wanted that mooring field as close as we could get it so that it would reduce the boat traffic there. And people get, people swim there all the time.
The boats keep going up and down.
And, and so I was confused with that logic, but that's what the, the people wanted. And, and we did this to every single mooring field that had this situation, and it was always the same result. Now, that's that one deal. But I, I can assure you that the harbor has, most definitely, places where a boat cannot creep, stick out one inch, a quarter of an inch. Say Newport Island, for example, there's no room. You can't. But on Harbor Island, Lido Island, and the peninsula, and down on Bayside Drive, way down there by the Coast Guard, those, if they, if, if the docks that are there now are, they seem to be working. Nobody is complaining, there's not a navigational problem, and they're all illegal. So what we need to do is identify the places where we can appeal or, or, or come up with various conditions that the homeowner would have if we felt that it was not impeding in navigation. And there are a lot of places. So I would like it, I would like the Harbor Commission to go back, identify these areas, and say they're red. So everything around Newport Island and all of Balbo Coast is red. You can't change it. But places where you've got the entire length of Lido Sued, every homeowner is, I call it, they're, they're illegal, they're criminals. I'm just kidding. But we don't, they're not criminals, they didn't know. There, there's no yellow line out there. And nobody is complaining as, in Groves that these docks are sticking out too far. So I would like to see them go back and, and identify areas where we can discuss it, and identify areas where there's no discussion, so that they have the ability to make appeals to those homeowners who have property rights, who've spent a lot of money to live on the bay. They deserve that.
Uh, Mr. Avery?
I'm not sure they deserve it. This isn't about deserving, this is about, you know, people, they, they were able to, under the law, under our ordinance, be able just to go out to the pier headline. And we could make a decision if they could go out the project line, and they would just be able to make that. We've had a very inconsistent, obviously, measuring tape out there, or policy, or staff, or individuals who've ignored whatever plans they had and went beyond. And this has just grown organically. And I agree with Duffy, nobody's really complaining about this situation. But what, I think the biggest thing here is not the past, it's what we do in the future. Because if we allow everyone to go to the project line, you know, in certain areas, you're going to be granting a lot of, a lot of ability for people to take their docks over public water, over public land, out further. It's a huge bonus for them, and it's great. There's nothing wrong with it, except we just need to decide, is that water, at a certain point, where does the public interest come in in terms of not having boats stuck out that far? In this case, you've got a boat that could ultimately be out 20 feet past the project line in the harbor. And that's something, those are the kinds of issues we really need to think about, is what we want to do. And I agree with Councilman Duffield in terms of the Harbor Commission should really take this back and do a comprehensive sort of study of it, and figure out these places where we can do it. And then we've got to decide how far we're going to do it. And where does the public's right to water? Are we going to let everybody go out to the project line? So that means a lot of these slips, like at the end of Lido Island, can go out almost 20 feet, and then the boat can stick out another 20 feet. So now you're talking about sticking out 40 feet beyond the pier headline. And I submit, that's, that's a, that's a pretty good chunk of water that, you know, a lot of people can't go through anymore. And so boats tack and go back and forth through that channel, and it's not dangerous, they could just have to tack, and they're in a narrower channel. But why should the channel be made narrower for, for one individual? That's, that's my question. And, you know, if, if we want to do it as policy and let the harbor go that way, I'm fine with that. So it's just the, the, so we can't do the onesie twosies. But the Harbor Commission or the council, and that's what people want, and you can just take that and figure out, you know, a square footage. But every one of those houses on the east end of Lido Island, to the north of this particular site, is in the same situation, and would be able to go out, in that case, to the project line, and then would be able to have a boat that could go out another 20 feet beyond it, unless we precluded that option. But then we get into someone agreeing to stay to the, not extend it past a slip at all, and then that becomes a code enforcement issue all the time, because you know boats would be in there sticking out three feet, four feet, five feet. So kind of a whack-a-mole situation. So I don't see that's a real solution. It's really about the maximum how far a boat could stick out. I mean, there's plenty of examples. In that last slide you had showing the south side of Lido Island shows boats sticking way out, this example here. Way beyond their slips, yeah. Right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, the, the project line is 20 feet beyond the yellow line.
Yeah, and some boats here are sticking out close to that. And...
Most of the, sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's not that it's right or wrong, it's just about figuring out what to do here. That's, that's...
What, what was the intent of the Harbor Commission? That, that all properties, then as they revise or restructure their docks, or over time, any dock improvement, they'd have to go back to the pier headline? Was that it, to create that? Was the intent to create greater navigation?
The intent is always, they're, one of their primary goals is to maintain navigation. But I, I, if I could speak for the Harbor Commission, I would, I would suggest that they would, would want all non-permitted docks to be pulled back. But if you were previously permitted to a certain distance beyond the pier headline via an old council policy, I, I got the impression that they would probably allow that to proceed. Of course, every case is, is different, not different, but unique, I should say, yes. And they would look at each one independently.
So just as Mr. Avery was saying, we're looking at these one-off. So the new policy H1 has been in effect for one year or less?
Exactly, exactly, one year.
And so is this the first proposal that came before the Harbor Commission, and now is being appealed to change, go beyond that policy?
Second, I would think there would be, I would anticipate more on a somewhat regular basis.
Mayor Potem.
Yeah, I have to admit, listening to Brad and Duffy talk about this is actually really interesting. I, I don't, I'm not going to cut it off. I'm just going to say real quickly, when we approved H1 last year, one of the things that we had done, we had initiated a whole bunch of policy review by all of our boards and commissions and committees that had, had to do with this. And when they created H1, I mean, H1's been amended probably 40 times since going back to the 60s. I mean, it's literally a page and a half of amendment notations.
Pre-paragraphed policy.
Exactly, and so they streamlined the policy. I mean, the policy is actually fairly straightforward. It just, it requires the Harbor, Harbor Commission to make a deter, if, pardon me. It just says, "The Harbor Commission may permit a pier or float to extend beyond the pier headline if the Harbor Commission makes a determination that such extension will not negatively impact, one, navigation, two, adjacent property owners, and three, existing harbor uses." So if the Harbor Commission can make a determination that it doesn't negatively impact navigation, adjacent property owners and existing harbor uses, then it works. And so as I, as I understand it, all we're doing today is trying to decide whether the Harbor Commission made the right determination on this specific property using that specific criteria, which complies with the municipal code in operation. So if, if that's the case, then it, it doesn't seem to make any sense to me that we're even trying to compare other properties. Because when we're looking, for example, at the, these other properties, I mean, some of them, I don't know what their permit said. I mean, some of them may have been permitted, and they're, so they're not illegal. They're just going out past what this particular H1 policy would have said. And the same was true with Balbo Island, and same is true with all the others. So when we're looking at the, when we're looking at this specific property, and trying to make the determination, I'm trying, I, I want to make sure that we're focusing in specifically on this, and admittedly, this is the lawyer talking. But I want to make sure we're specifically looking at this property using this specific criteria that this, this body has adopted as a policy. Because my understanding, I, I think it's pretty clear what the, what the Harbor Commission was recommending to us, and also what we adopted based on, you know, this very plain language of the, of the, of the policy. And then, and then let's just, let's figure out, on this specific property, does it meet, or does it not meet, and let's move forward.
Mr. Duffield?
Right, I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Avery's comment about boats continually sticking out, we're going to keep them approving docks that go further and further and further out, that is absolutely not what the intention is. The intention is that if it works now, and it's been there for years and years, and the neighbors aren't complaining, and it's not impeding navigation, then it should be considered okay. And, and there are so many residents that have this problem that, that we need to give the Harbor Commission the tools necessary to make these decisions. But clearly, I'm, I'm not in favor of the existing docks going out further, okay? Which Mr. Avery made it sound like I was doing that. I, I do not want the docks to go further. But what exists now, in some conditions, not all, works fine.
So are you, are you saying that the Harbor Commission's decision was the right decision?
They can't, they, we don't give them the tools necessary to make that decision, because they're worried about precedence. If they do it for one guy, and they have to do it for this, and not this guy and this guy, it, it gets to be hard, ridiculous for them. It's not fair. I, I was a Harbor Commissioner, and we had that problem.
So they passed it up to us?
Yeah. And so what I, I think it's very compatible to look at our harbor, where it works, where it doesn't, identify that, put it in, in a map, so everybody knows what it is. And when you have an issue where it's a, a place that you can make an appeal, then fine, go to the Harbor Commission.
But you say this goes back to the audit of each, of every dock in the harbor? To determine where those areas are?
Yeah, and it wouldn't be that hard. This, this is, this isn't very difficult stuff.
Mr. Avery, you're up next again.
Yeah. As far as I'm concerned, I've always thought this, that all the docks in the harbor, as they are now, there's no such thing as an illegal dock in the harbor now. Because if that dock is beyond the pier headline, or it's configured differently, that's the fault of the city. That is the city either granted that, the permission, or it approved the dock was too long, or it didn't go after the fact like we do in building, and say, "Sir, your house isn't 33 feet high, it's 35 feet high, and you've got to tear the roof off." And that has never happened. So these homeowners, they are just, as Duffy said, a lot of them, they're, they're not out there with measuring tapes. They're just, they hired a contractor, they're working in LA, and their dock gets built. And so, sure, maybe a few of them did something to try and get past it. But people building houses do that, but we, we, we get them. So every dock in the harbor, to me, now is fine, and we should never, you cannot go back and say to somebody, "You've got to shorten your dock, or change it, or take it out." That is, that, that's, as they say, that ship has sailed.
No pun intended.
As I said, it is about the future of how we want the harbor to look. And my only concern is that I think the term "other uses" means the guy in the kayak, the guy in the small boat, the people using the water. And collectively, over time, if you, if the docks go out, and, and I'm not saying it's wrong that they go out necessarily, but they'll all go out, and then the boats will stick out 20 feet, and collectively, you will lose a lot of water space on the harbor. And that's something that, that's, to me, the biggest issue in this, is to figure that out. Obviously, and Duffy's quite correct, it's not hard to figure out every site. Like on this end of Lido Island here, we're looking at here. Obviously, the channel's very wide, because the next is Balbo Peninsula. So then it's a question of how far can they go out? And how much water should, so you've got these little boats coming along here? He wouldn't be this close, he'd be further out. You know, whatever his comfort zone is off the dock, sure, he's going to miss these boats. But instead of being here, he's going to be further out. And the next guy will be further out, and they're just all out. And is it, does it really make that much difference? Well, no, but when you add it all up, it does make a difference, in my view. So I think the other uses part of that rule is an important one to consider and to take into account, is the public's right to freely navigate Newport Harbor. And obviously, they're watching out for boats. But at some, we've got to watch this, because it's not one. It's going to be, over time, a reduction in, in the surface of the bay.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and finish.
I understand the pressure on it, because the boats are getting bigger, people have their homes, people want a larger boat. And so, you know, the real solution here, and it's not attractive to many people, is to dredge, do whatever you can, do whatever you need to do to secure your seawall, and have deep water up to your seawall, or water deep enough to get your ballot to it. And then you're, you're good. But each, each site's, each site's a little different.
Does the Coastal Commission review every dock formulation?
When there's a, when there's a reconfiguration, they do.
So the Coastal Commission still has to look at this and approve of this?
They do, and they would. But for these types of matters, they rely on the city's policies for guidance. As long as we're, as long as the applicant is abiding by the city's rules, then the Coastal Commission has generally approved, barring anything else going on with the dock.
Mr. Valdo?
Well, in this case, I think we're being triers of fact. I want, I'd like to hear from the parties. Will the Coastal Commission consider the analysis and the factual parameter, or only be looking for our policy that's going to be blanketly applied?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow your question.
So you just said that the Coastal Commission looks and makes sure that anything that's approved are within our policies?
Yes.
If we were to approve this, we'd be waiving a policy, essentially, correct?
Yes.
Does Coastal Commission look at the facts like we do, and observing if we've, if waiving the policy is, is understandable, given all those facts? Or is it going to act more like a strict body and say, "We don't care, this is a violation of your policy"?
Well, it's always hard for me to predict what...
Can I jump in real quick? It actually is not a waiver of the policy. The policy specifically provides that you can make three findings and approve the project.
Okay, so it's no waiver.
So it's already built into the policy.
Excellent, thank you for answering that. And it's late, so I'm not as sharp as I should be. One thing I would like to note, though, I'm reading these records, and there's numerous people talking about assistance offered by this particular applicant in the dock. And that is one reason why public lands are allowed to have docks over them. Traditionally, it was to shore up erosion and provide safe harbor. And I'm looking forward to hearing from both parties on this topic while we're ready to move on.
Have you finished your presentation?
I have.
You have. All right, well, let's hear from the appellant, if we may, please.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Sherman Stacey, and I'm here on behalf of Mark and Shawna Consulman, who are here with me as well. And we've appealed this decision of the Harbor Commission because we did not believe that there was an interference or a negative impact on any of the three issues that were listed in your policy H1.
The clicker's...
It's here, oh, good. I hope I can operate it well. We believe that the new dock configuration meets policy H1. It will have no negative impact on navigation, no negative impact on existing harbor uses, and no negative impact on adjacent property. Now, in the staff report, the Harbor Commission did not adopt findings. They don't adopt a resolution. So Mr. Miller had to listen to the hearing and discern from the minutes what seemed to be most important to the Harbor Commission. And the negative impact on navigation was what he believed the Harbor Commission focused on. There were some comments about the possibility there may be a negative impact on adjacent property. Even though no one objected, there was some supposition or suggestion that... property, even though no one objected, there was some supposition or suggestion that neighboring property owners might object, and we've tried to overcome that tonight, as you'll see through the presentation. There wasn't much discussion of negative impact on existing harbor uses at the harbor commission, but I think you can make the finding that there was not. And there was a focus on the word "may." That is, it didn't say you had to approve it, it said you may approve it. And at the end of the minutes that are attached, as attachment D to your staff report, the harbor commission expressed its concern about setting precedents. Difficult to be the first one, sort of through the gate, because the worry about precedent becomes important. And that's why tonight, we'd like to focus on the facts related to those three policies. H1, and you've been through this before, says you can extend beyond the pier headline if the harbor commission makes the determination that such extension will not negatively impact navigation, adjacent property owners, and existing harbor uses. Like to start, we have a drawing of the proposed Consulman Dock, which would come out four feet back from the project line. It is already being moved closer to the bulkhead, there will be some dredging necessary for that, but they don't want to get to the point, this is a high siltation area, as we might note from a review I'll have later of the dock immediately next door, which was permitted to extend out because of a policy that said you did not want to have excessive dredging. And excessive meant, in that case, frequent, because the silts that come through the coast highway bridge, come straight down across, they fill up the anchorage, they fill up the Newport Harbor Yacht Club mooring field, and they silt up around the tip of Lido Island, particularly on the far side, where the consulmen's and their neighbors are. Here's why the dock has that odd configuration. This is a photograph where there used to be a fixed channel warning sign directly behind. Otherwise, Mr. Warmington would have been quite prepared, I think, to build a dock that was like everybody else's, that went perpendicular to the bulkhead line. We don't have a precise date for the photograph, but Chris Miller has in his office the navigational charts historically for the harbor, and did confirm that there was, in fact, a fixed marker that sat off the end of Lido Island, which, quite frankly, a lot of us can't even remember was there. But it has been removed, and now that the consulmen's have bought the house, they want to straighten the dock to be pretty much like everyone else. And if they're going to straighten the dock, they want to build as much dock as they can. For Mr. Consulman, it's an issue of being able to utilize, for, very involved in Harbor 20 racing, to be able to have a location where Harbor 20 boats during racing have places that they can be tied up, other than at yacht club docks, a place where service personnel can go out from, that is, the race committee people don't necessarily have to only go out from the yacht club dock. And so, we have included, as you'll see later, comments from people involved in sailboat racing, as to the impact the dock would have. Now, my measurement, I don't have the nice measurement tools the city has in GIS. Chris can put a dot in one place, and a dot in another place, and the program will tell him what it is. I have to take my transparent ruler on the scale that's on the map, and then go try and figure out the distance. So I come up with a measurement of about 270 feet between the end of the consulman's property and the location of the anchorage boundary. Now, as you can see, Lido Island is curving away from the anchorage. So as Chris said, it just very much depends upon which point you measure from. So if the channel there is 270 feet wide, the principal channel is 200 feet wide, and I think we'll find examples of 200 feet being a normal navigational size for a channel. Here, we look at the size of various channels in the area. 125 feet is approximately the size between the pier headline and mooring fields H and J, 175 feet on the Balboa Peninsula side, 200 feet is the channel between Lido Island and the anchorage, and between the anchorage and the Newport Harbor Yacht Club mooring field. And most notably, the dotted blue line is the federal channel, the place where the federal government was supposed to dredge to the maximum depth, to allow a boat to transit back into the turning basin at the back of the channel. And it is 200 feet wide. Some of the standards we heard about at the harbor commission were that, when I say maximum channel width design, the maximum, not maximum, should say probably minimum, equal to five times the maximum beam of vessels passing the channel. So between the shore and the vessel, and between vessels, and the next vessel, and whatever obstruction there might be on the other side, you have at least five times. The amount of distance that 200 feet covers quite amply for any boat that's in Newport Harbor, because you would have to be a 40-foot beam, which I think is extraordinarily rare, except for catamarans or trimarans, which will have a beam of that nature. So it is our position, and the position we took at the harbor commission, that 200 feet would be an adequate and appropriate channel width. And even if a boat extended out, now, the consulmen's get charged, when they want to build the new dock, with the idea that they're going to put in the maximum possible boat. Mr. Miller was clear, all of the other people along this area could also put in their maximum possible boat, and all of those boats could overhang a particular distance. If you look at the dock that is at 933, we'll look at this a little bit later, because that's a dock that was approved in 2003 to go out a little bit farther than the consulmen's are proposing. As you can see, it goes almost to the project line there. And it's our position that as long as you have 200 feet between the anchorage boundary and where those boats would be, you would not have a negative impact upon navigation, that it would be ample for all purposes. Look at the second issue, negative impact on adjacent properties. We had not solicited the comments at the harbor commission from the neighbors. So Mr. Consulman did so. He wrote to each of his neighbors, he sent them all of the plans, and they responded, the emails follow this, that you have our support, won't cause any negative impacts, concur with your proposed dock reconfiguration, your dock configuration looks good to me, I support your plan, I am definitely in support, good luck with this.
Wouldn't they support it anyway, because they would like to do the same thing?
Well, but they already have, most of them. If we go back to the pictures of where they are, most of them already do go out well beyond the pier headline. Some of them actually go out beyond the project line. But the policy is negative impact on neighboring property owners, the fact that they may already be far out beyond, and therefore, that's perfectly why they're accepting their neighbor coming out, I mean, I'm going to say a similar distance, a lesser distance, that it does not negatively impact them, not because they might wish to do it, but probably because they already have.
So can I just ask a question, or on the subject property? So if it went out close to the red line, not to the red line, but almost to it, how far beyond the red line would the boat extend?
You could probably have a vessel, since the width, I believe, was 23 feet, is that correct, that was?
23 feet is the-
Is the dock width. So if you give a foot on either side for fenders, and for a large boat, you probably need even bigger, because the fenders get bigger the larger the boat you have, you might have a boat with a 20-foot beam, maybe a 21-foot beam. So you'd be four feet back from the project line at a 21-foot beam, the rule would allow you to extend out 21 feet, or 17 feet, beyond the red line.
Wow, so, did you, do we have any visuals that show that?
The one, my last slide, that had the green dots showed approximately that, plus or minus a foot or two.
Bless you.
As could, as you see, the dock that is immediately adjacent at 933, if they chose to buy a boat of the maximum size that would fit in that dock, it would be very similar and very close in location.
So for all intents and purposes, any one of these properties could, if they had the boat, could extend beyond the red line?
Yes.
That really, does that change the navigational opportunity?
I think it does when you get inside the 200-foot margin. Once you reach 200 feet, then I think you have to be concerned. But as long as there is 230 or 240 feet of channel width between the anchorage and what would be the aft of the maximum possible-sized boat, and that's not necessarily what will happen. You notice, some places have maximum-sized boats, lots of them don't, almost none in this photograph.
Well, that's for now, but I'm-
I do understand.
But if they all extend, I guess, I'm concerned about it going beyond the boat itself, the, I guess it's the stern, it's, or how does it, is it parked?
In the normal docking, it would probably be the stern of the boat.
That would extend beyond, 23 feet beyond the red line?
I say 17, but, yeah, it would extend beyond the red line, more than 15 feet.
But would jet out there, so anybody coming along in a stand-up paddleboard or kayak?
It would extend out about where the nine, a little further than where the existing dock at 929 already is.
Well, it's a little bit, I think it's more than a little bit.
Well, it's 20 feet between the yellow and the red line. That seems to stick out about half the distance between the yellow and the red line, so it's about 10.
Another distance, equivalent distance beyond the red line is where the boat would come, the rear of that boat at 929.
Yes.
That's really sticking out there. Anyway, keep going.
All right.
Please.
Well, these are the emails from each of the neighbors, a communication from Mr. Consulman of them sending him his plans for the dock, and their response that I had quoted in the previous email. So I think we have satisfied that, at least as far as the neighboring property owners are concerned, they have communicated that they do not believe that there is a negative impact. So I think that supports that finding, that there's no negative impact. Impactive impact on existing harbor uses. The existing harbor uses we looked at were racing, we looked at navigation, we don't think it has a negative impact on navigation, but on racing, we went to people who are involved in racing in the harbor, and they have letters to you, to the effect that they do not believe that it would have any impact on sailboat racing in Newport Harbor at the east end of Lido Island. The other area that is of concern is if you have your pilings at the project line, you might interfere with dredging, because that's the line where the federal government dredges to. But the pilings for these docks would be set back at least five feet from that line, because the tip of the dock is four feet from the project line, the piling is generally about a foot inside the end of the dock. And therefore, I think it would not have any interference with what federal dredging could be performed in that location. Mr. Avery's?
But you presented this, excuse me, for a minute, you presented no negative impact on racing to the harbor commission, no negative impact on dredging, no adjacent neighbor, all these negative findings you presented to the harbor commission?
I did not, I was not, when I say we-
Well, the applicant did.
My applicant did present not as thoroughly as I am doing now. Let me go to one other issue, and I've raised this issue with Mr. Miller, and I raised it with Dave Gerling when I first became involved in this. This came to the harbor commission as an appeal from a denial by the Public Works Department. But policy H1 said the Public Works Department isn't the one who makes a decision as to whether you go beyond the pier headline. So in my view, there was never a denial, it's simply that the harbor commission is the first place you go, asking to proceed. The appeal from denial is the template that used to exist before the new policy H1, because things only got to the harbor commission in that fashion previously. But now, they consider it from the beginning. In your staff report to the city council, it described, in other words, individual approval to build piers and floats beyond the pier headline will no longer be made by the staff. But when framed to the harbor commission, it was framed as needing to overturn the decision of the Public Works Department.
Do you have a copy of that language on the agenda?
I have a copy of the May 28 staff report.
That went to the harbor commission?
The May 22nd staff report, 2018, I do have a copy of that, from which this language is quoted.
All right.
Just briefly, but you guys are reviewing this de novo.
I understand that, but without that extra burden, in my view, at the planning, I mean, at the harbor commission, we might well have had a different result, and wouldn't be coming to you with an appeal from a denial. But there, it was framed to them, and although they may as well be looking at it de novo, you, looking at it de novo, you still look toward what the decision of your commissioners had been, and it carries great weight. So that framing of it, that it was a review of the denial by the Public Works Department, I think had an impact on the harbor commissioners, and an impact on the idea of precedent, that we're going to be, I don't want to use the word, maybe, we're going to be strict, and we're going to be difficult, because we don't want to set precedents that will allow things to occur, and because the policy says "may," even if you really can meet all the criteria, we're still not obligated to approve your application, because it doesn't say we shall do it, it says we may do it. And this is going to be a policy issue you're going to have to work out with your harbor commission. Is policy H1 intended to limit the development of people's private piers adjoining properties to the pier headline? Because that's the way it reads, and if you consider that it would be poor precedent to even allow the first one, in circumstances where I think we are strongly able to show that we don't have any of the negative impacts that were contained in policy H1, my belief is that you're going to have to have a decision, are we going to strictly apply H1, where it will be difficult for the harbor commission to give a determination that you can meet all the findings? Or are we going to be more generous in policy H1, particularly in circumstances where people on both sides of a property already have docks that extend out to the extent that an applicant may wish to do? This, I've already gone over that issue. Our view was, I read through the planning commission minutes on the adoption of policy H1, I read through the staff reports to the harbor commission, I read through the staff report to the city council, it was adopted on your consent calendar. I could not find anything in those documents that suggested that it was intended to become a new strict limitation on the ability of people with waterfront houses to be able to extend their dock to the point where it made sense to be able to do so. But the harbor commission, I think, is concerned that once they have even granted one, and there are some specific circumstances I'll go into as to this dock and this location, why the extension is important, it has to do with the dredging. This is the permit next door for the Rosensteins, this is at 933 via Lido, this, in fact, talking to Chris, it was probably one of the first ones he signed in 2003. It approved the dock going basically out to about the location where we are proposing here. And one of the reasons was the difficulty of the shoaling that came along the end of the island at that location. As you can see, he moved his existing dock further out in order to be able to avoid the necessity for very frequent dredging. Now, to some extent, prior dredging project, particularly in the Back Bay, and the future dredging projects, may minimize these siltation issues, because you've got a deep hole that's supposed to pick up silts back there at the Back Bay as they come out of the creek. But this is the location approved for the dock next door, it went to the coastal commission, got approval, it's permit 503480, it's next door, and the coastal commission, you know, they do look to see whether the city reviewed it in accordance with whatever the city policies may be. And we do recognize that that list of changes in policy H1 is somewhat daunting, to think how many times it required a change or revision. But we are asking no more than what the neighbor had asked, and the location at the tip of our dock is at the same location. Now, we'll grant that it probably will accommodate a larger vessel in this dock than the neighbor, who simply moved his dock out. We thought, as I read the staff reports, policy H1 was intended to simplify the rules and make the harbor commission, not the staff, but the harbor commission, to determine whether they go beyond the pier headline. I'll give just a little bit more history. And I'll give just a little bit more history. Harbor lines, bulk headlines, pier headlines, project lines, were created under the Rivers and Harbors Act of 1899, when things were quite different at that time. The first harbor lines in Newport Harbor were in 1913, following an Army Corps of Engineers survey in 1911. They adopted new harbor lines in 1938, and then in 1951, and we still operate under the harbor lines that were adopted in 1951. The nature of vessels has changed considerably over that period of time, and I didn't read anything that suggested that Policy H1, which every one of these docks that goes beyond is approved by the Coastal Commission, is approved by the Army Corps of Engineers, is approved by the Regional Water Quality Control Board. We have to go through all of those as well. And we believe that H1 was not intended to make dock construction more restrictive than it had been in the past. At least, I could find nothing in the history that I read of it that told me that that was the case. That, I think, I want to just go back to the shoaling issue once again. As you can see where he moved it out, and if we go back to the photographs, largest one we have, you can see the shoaling that starts to pick up. It's at 939, 933. There's been some dredging there of late in order to be able to not have boats that sit on the sand, because 929 and the property next to it have not dredged to the extent that 933 and 939 have. But it shoals up reasonably quickly at that location.
Do they dredge, these properties typically dredge?
They, it will silt up to the point where your dock will float, will hit sand at low tide, and you literally have to be able to, you know, take the sand out and dredge it.
So if subject property were to dredge closer to the bulkhead, then they could move the dock up in closer?
It's moved as much as we feel it safely can before the three-to-one slope of the sand from the bulkhead out becomes steeper. If we move it closer, it will become steeper than three-to-one, which at least the engineers suggest is the slope you should have from your bulkhead to protect the bulkhead. These are old bulkheads, and nobody's real sure how well they were constructed.
All right, is that?
My conclusion is, we believe that we met all three of the criteria, and that since we do not negatively impact navigation, our adjacent property owners are very comfortable with the project, and we don't negatively impact existing harbor uses, not looking at Mr. Avery's concerns about, because this was not raised at the Planning Commission, about sort of a cumulative effect of every vessel taking some small piece. Each of us can say, it's only a little area, but his concern is that when you add them all together, you restrict how much water is available to the public. I still think it is a very minimal amount, even when you add them all together, and that this will not have negative impacts, that the Harbor Commission should have approved it, and I think needs to be sent a, not a message, but I think they're worrying that they have to far too strictly apply this Policy H1 beyond the scope. It's not going to pull everybody back. I think everybody agrees that things that are there are going to stay there, and the fact that a reconfiguration of a dock puts somebody in between the same location of his neighbors does not appear to me to cause any.
But does the Harbor Commission consider the propensity of the boats to extend even beyond the project line?
They did, they did have considerable discussion about the maximum size vessel. So.
And they think that that width defines that or limits it?
The beam under the city count, under the code, you can extend beyond the end of your fingers, the beam of the boat. But councilmen's do not themselves, and I realize, anybody can buy any one of these houses and decide to get a much larger boat and moor it in their slip and extend out. And that could occur here. It is not these parties' intentions to do so, but it is a larger dock. He could get as a 75-foot boat in the existing dock, as Mr. Miller had indicated. It's not a considerably greater increase, even if he were to have the largest boat. But it seems unfair to charge him with being the only one who's going to get the largest boat, when everybody else there could sell their house or themselves get a larger boat. Duffy's boats seem to be the predominant ones at the docks these days, as people age and taking care of a boat, by the time you're on a waterfront house on Lido Island, it's a lot of work, and the boats have, quite frankly, some have gotten larger, many have gotten smaller.
Mr. Avery?
So I think the Harbor Commission, what they were doing was trying to hold the line on, on the pier head, you know, on the pier headline, and to the degree that they could. And I think this, taken to its maximum with a boat hanging out another 20 feet, is arguably, there's very few examples of that in the harbor where you'd see that. You know, anywhere you go, it's sticking out that far. But this is, so eastward, if you go, not eastward, but northward, there's no dock that sticks out beyond where the councilman's dock is now. So that whole bottom of Lido Island, yes, next door, the Lion House, it's sticking out. But when you're coming on a boat up the channel, the first thing you'd come to, if you're enclosed, would be this new boat sticking out, the new dock sticking out. So more than the Lion Dock. The 200-foot channels, you know, that's not a part of this. I mean, you can, that's, that's, that's a nice, good-sized channel, you can go up and down that, even if he's sticking out. The question is, it's abnormal, it's going to stick out, and it's going to show abnormally and surprise some people. And it's going to, it's going to stick out there quite far. But the, I'm supporting the Harbor Commission on this, because I believe those guys are close to the water, they're paying attention, they know what they're looking at, and I think they gave it a lot of consideration. And I think this would be noticeably different on the harbor, and that's one of the concerns I have. And the other concern I have is, yes, the definition of other uses, which I take to mean other public uses of the water and their ability to freely go around the harbor. And this just reduces it by, yes, a little bit, but it's, to me, it's, this has been for a long time a public right-of-way, a public waterway, if you will, and it's being chewed a little bit at a time. And I understand why, and I, you know, it's not about whether, you know, the applicant is a very nice person, it's not about whether he gives space to the Harbor 20s or he helps people out. I think all homeowners will do that. I think they're all generous, they'll all help. This is just about doing something that, you're asking a lot here, in my view, to put this in and then put in a large vessel, or, but even if they didn't, eventually, somebody probably would, and with a 23-foot beam, because it's the beam that makes the large boat happen. So at the Lion Dock, that's fairly narrow, they never intended it to have a big boat there, and that boat, that dock's probably only about 13, 14 feet wide. And so that really, there's no 80-footer or 70-footer that's 13, 14 feet wide, and they could only stick out their beam, so they wouldn't be sticking out 20. But when you do a big boat, a big dock with 23 feet space in it, you're allowing a boat to stick out, in this case, about 16 feet beyond the project line.
Do we know the dimensions of the proposed boat that would sit in that dock?
It's a Harbor 20.
Oh, there's not a big boat? I thought in the notes that there was a big, large yacht that was coming in.
No, the councilmen's do not own a big, large yacht, they're intending to bring into this dock.
It says it, it's, well, I'm just looking at the minutes from the Harbor Commission, and he's talking about a large boat that's coming in.
They framed it, when I listened to the tape, they framed it around what could happen, and whether the councilmen's.
And that's how we should frame it also.
I understand that, but no, there is no present proposal or intention to bring a large boat.
Well, then why, all right, okay, well, then why don't we narrow the width of the beam there like the neighbor has done in 733 or 729? Narrow that, so then that defines the length of the boat. Well, why don't you come up to the lectern, please?
Yeah. I believe what she was saying is, within the dock, they like to be able to turn the Harbor 20s. They want it to be at least 21 or 22 feet wide, so they can turn Harbor 20s within the U-shaped area, which is what they expect to have as the principal use. This is Shawna Councilman.
Hi.
Hi.
So normally, when we have multiple Harbor 20s in there for championships or Baldwin Cup Regatta, we may have eight to 10 Harbor 20s in there, and we, for sake of a better word, we med tie them.
Yeah.
This way. And they're 20 feet long, hence the name Harbor 20, and that's how we fit them.
So you're saying that if, if, if we were to approve, if, I'm just, that the boats would not extend beyond the red line, the project line?
Well, none of the boats that we have extend that far. But we have had friends pull their boats in for maybe a couple hours, but none that went past. And the way our dock is right now, if you, we could put a much bigger boat in there, and it would encumber our neighbor from, because we go all the way to our water line, our property line, and that's on the north side, and so our neighbor wouldn't be able to pull in to his waterway without having to go around that. So we want to straighten the dock, I probably shouldn't even be up here.
Well, anyway, we've got other, more questions here. Thank you, Mr. Muldoon, go ahead.
Mr. Stacy, I believe with almost every point you made this evening, staff was incorrect in having it be an overturn of their decision, it was not their decision to make, it was Harbor Commission's decision. I think that probably did prejudice decision as they heard it, they should have heard it in a more, less biased presentation. I agree with your interpretation of H1, it should be applied to the facts of this matter. I see the curvature of this shoreline, I see clearly that every dock on this shoreline should stick out a little bit, because that's the way circles work. And I think that, given all the facts of the case, the width of the channel of this particular location, and the intent of the ability of any dock owner to use public land for the sake of providing safe harbor, which clearly your clients do on a regular basis, as well as just overall nice hospitality, we need to do nothing but support you in the highest way, and I think there's no, there's no harm of precedent, if anything, the harm is acknowledging how many other people are in violation of that hard-line rule that the Harbor Commission handed to you, and I think that that would be unjust. So I'm supporting approving this application.
Mr. Duffield.
Thank you. One of the elements that we haven't discussed that's all around this harbor is boat overhang. So boat overhang has come to the Harbor Commission many times, and it's always been kicked the can down the road, because it's, there's so many unique situations in the harbor, where you theoretically could have it and places where you can't have any of it. This is the same thing. Each and every one of these has a unique situation. And so, you know, in this case, the boat overhang, in other words, if we gave the Harbor Commission the tools, that they could, in this case, put a condition on it, you can only go half the width of your beam, I don't know, a condition, you can only, whatever. But those things are done all the time, variances and such, and homes and everything.
Land.
Yeah. But for some reason, we've put the fear of God in the Harbor Commission, that if they set a precedence, everything's going to go crazy. So if we give them, though, a chance to make a logical decision that doesn't affect the neighbors and the navigation and all the other things, then there should be a compromise. There should be some method for a variance of such, like, for example, you can only stick out half the width of your beam, something like that.
I like that. Are you making, do you want to make a motion?
Well, I was hoping that we could take this, sorry, but I was hoping we could take this back to the Harbor Commission and have them relook at the harbor as a whole, for all the places where this pier headline and bulk headline are affected, and come back to us and show us the map that there are places that you can and cannot appeal.
Actually, why didn't the Harbor Commission, Chris, why didn't the Harbor Commission do a total, I mean, to extend the proposed implications for the entire harbor? Why didn't they look at it that way, holistically?
Actually, we did, and going back to your previous question, I don't have an exact number of the houses, but we did look graphically at all the docks that exceeded beyond, or beyond the pier headline, mostly in relation to the council policy. So in Council Policy H1, the old one, there were, I'm not going to say half the harbor, but a significant portion of the harbor was allowed to go beyond the pier headline. And so I have that audit, and I can refine it, but.
But it didn't look at it as far as impacts as what they were talking about, navigation, so on and so forth.
Would you like to make a motion to send this back to the Harbor Commission?
Public comment.
Oh.
We still haven't taken a public comment.
All right. Thank you, sir. Well, we're still talking up here, we haven't finished.
Well, I think it's important that we give the Harbor Commission the right tools to do their job, because this isn't going away. There's hundreds of these that are going to come up. If we prove it tonight, then I think what we need to do is look at it from 20,000 feet and give them, give them what we need to, so they can do their job.
Muldoon.
I just, I think that H1 provides all the tools we need to make a decision this evening. I believe that Mr. Stacy's probably on his client's dime. It's probably a much bigger lift to look at every case individually, and it's for, it's a hearings setup, meaning if you want this, you go to Harbor Commission, and then if they say no, you go to council. It's not set up in such a way that everyone who comes here requires an entire evaluation of the harbor and a policy change. That would be onerous on the applicant's time and finances. So I definitely support an auditor looking at the harbor and making more decisions on this, but I think for the sake of those who are in front of us today, I feel comfortable making a factual termination incorporating Mr. Duffield's suggestion on beam restriction or the amount that a boat can be outside of this dock, but I think it's just, it's not fair to the applicant to have them be pioneering a change harbor-wide.
Mr. Avery?
Fine, either way, I could go with a voter, so.
I could too. I could approve it tonight, or not.
Well, all right. Anything coming on this side? Ms. Brenner, did you want to, are you pushing the button there?
I'm an occasional boater. I use the harbor only when friends invite me out on their Duffy's generally, and a kayaker occasionally. And I just have to say that as the years have gone by, it's gotten much less enjoyable. It's not nearly as much fun in the harbor as it used to be, because there are, it's crowded, it's crowded out there, there's, doesn't seem to be as much, it used to be wide-open spaces out there, you could go out and enjoy the harbor and be sort of carefree. Now, when we're on our Duffy's, I am nervous the entire time, and I just think that we have given our Harbor Commission instructions, and they are experts in this field, we approved a policy, and then we had a Harbor Commission that implemented that policy and that came down with a ruling, and I'm sure these are very nice people, and I understand what they're trying to do, but do we have the right? There's no way that we can say that any intrusion out into the harbor does not impact navigation. And what we're doing is, the more we impede that, the less. the less enjoyment we're giving to the general public who deserves the right to enjoy the harbor also. And I just think if we're going to second guess our commissioners every time we get the opportunity, then we need to be giving them better directions or we need to not be approving policies that ask them to apply too much interpretation. The policies need to be more straightforward. So at this point in time, I'm prepared to support the Harbor Commission's ruling and their policy.
Okay, Mr. Avery, do you want to make, you're still up there?
Um, no, I think I've said my piece.
Um, well, so far, did you make a motion, Mr. Duffield? All right, but we could still go on. I, well, I have a question. Did the Harbor Commission consider the implication of every current dock owner and their prospective adjustments to their dock that they would all want to reach out further if they could?
Well, when they were considering this particular dock, they were just considering this particular dock.
I know, but didn't they think of it in terms of the entire harbor and what its implications, the ripple effect throughout the whole harbor?
I think that's a concern of the Harbor Commission, yes. But, but I remember them being specifically interested in impacts to navigation and, and use.
Okay, so really what the, okay, so the interpretation of the Harbor Commission's actions is to pull all the docks in over time?
I, I believe so.
No?
Well, they want to comply with harbor policy H1. That's the Harbor Commission's goal.
All right, so, but ultimately, over time, so the neighbor or people around have docks and they, if they want to remodel their dock or improve their dock, do the infrastructure repair, that the Harbor Commission's going to say, you have to pull it back. You can't be beyond the project line, you have to come back to the pier line.
If I had to speak for the Harbor Commission, which I would be careful not to, but I would guess that, that if, if a dock was previously permitted to be built out to a certain distance, i.e. if it was previously approved by a count, by a previous council policy, they would, they would consider that very highly. And they would, they might approve it to.
So we're going to consistently have variances, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
All right, let's go out, any more comments up here? Let's go out to the public. Is there any other public comment? Does the appellant want to make any comment or any other member of the public?
Just a comment, appreciate Mr. Muldoon's comments. And if there were a motion to reverse the decision of the Harbor Commission and adopt a resolution supporting what the applicants have sought, I would hope you would vote for it.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Mayor Dixon, members of the council, my name is Jim Moser. I was intrigued by Mr. Stacy's presentation. If I understood his line of reasoning, when these red lines were laid out in 1913 or 1931 or 1951, wherever it was, they gave the public more water than they needed. And that this channel actually, if it was 200 feet wide, that would be quite adequate for the public. And if I understood it, he would like council policy H1 revised so that if these private property owners wanted to build their docks out another 50 or 70 feet out into the harbor, the Harbor Commission should be compelled to do that because it would not impede navigation. I don't really buy that line of reasoning. I would side with council member Avery that the public has a right to access to this water and we should not be denying or reducing that. I think the channel was laid out wisely. I think there's a navigation issue having to do with the dredging, which I think also perhaps weighed on the Harbor Commission's reasoning on this. And if the boats extend out, I don't know if it was in this staff report or somewhere. I heard when the army corps comes to dredge that they just steer around the obstacles. So if there is a boat sticking way out and the boat doesn't happen to move when the dredger goes by, the channel is going to be lost to navigation because it's not going to be dredged. I think that's an issue and I think it does set a precedent. And I think on page 15-15 of your staff report in the minutes of the Harbor Commission, you see Commissioner Beer's reasoning where he was going through the docks as council member Avery was doing from the north, coming down towards this curve. And the docks there stick out kind of the pier headline and they're narrower. So this one not only would stick out further, but it would be wider. And although there may not be any plan for a big boat to go there at the moment, the dock, once it's there, will go with whoever buys the property in the future. And a big boat could go there and it would be the first thing that you encounter. And the two lots to the north, one of them, it says, the biggest boat that could fit in that dock. The second one up would be four feet short of the project line. The next one would just go to the project line. And then this one would be sticking out 23 feet beyond it, just as councilman Avery said. I think that's a problem for the public's perception of their use of the water and their use of the water. And I think if the channel was 200 feet wide, which we've heard is adequate, I think those paddle borders are going to be kind of pushed out. I, I don't want to see the docks being compelled, that the Harbor Commission has to approve, going out as, as far as we've heard that they should. I think we have a good policy as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next comment, please.
Yes, he did not get up when you asked for public comment. He didn't get up. I just wanted a moment. The project line is the maximum location. I think Mr. Miller will confirm that when they do dredging, if there are vessels or even docks that might interfere with it, because you can see there's a number of docks gone beyond the project line, they move them. It is not the case that the dredge goes around them when they do a dredging project. Is that correct, Mr. Miller?
Well, that is correct only from a vessel perspective. And this happened about five houses down the last time around where I asked the residents to move and they gladly moved the vessels. But for a permanent float or dock, that they wouldn't be moved and the corps would just dredge. They would create a buffer around a float.
Yes, and our float is set back from the project line, not at the project line. And one of the, the 23 feet, Mr. Miller, correct me if I'm wrong. At the Harbor Commission, there was a confusion whether the distance from the pier headline to the project line was 15 feet or 20 feet. And I believe the GIS mapping had at that time, perhaps incorrectly set it at 15 feet. And therefore, that's where the 23-foot number came from. In fact, the project line was five feet further out. And we didn't extend our line, our dock, to where the project line actually was, kept it where it had been. But if Mr. Miller would confirm that that is, is correct. The 23 feet came from overhanging a project line that was five feet less than what the project line was.
Yes, that, that is correct. I, after the Harbor Commission meeting in February, I audited the city's GIS system in relation to pierhead and project lines, kind of did a spot check overall versus the 1951 map. And lo and behold, I found a discrepancy in our, so that's, that's what Mr. Stacy is referring to with the measurements. So this, this map that you're seeing here and the ones that I've been showing all have been corrected. And I've worked with the GIS department to rectify their mapping error.
And Mr. Miller provided me with the access to the GIS so I could utilize it here after it had been corrected.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Avery, did you have a comment to make? Any other public comments?
Shawna Councilman, and I'm sorry it's so late. This is really important to us. So I just wanted to reiterate the fact that we bought our house in 2010. We did all our due diligence of what we were told. Not long after, we received a letter from the city saying that our $150 permit fee for our dock would now be a use fee for somewhere around $3,000 for our dock. So we accepted that. And then we were notified that there are seals problem in the dock, but we were not allowed to touch the seals. So we were notified, so we didn't. But then not too long later, we received another notification that said, if you have seals on your dock, you are mandated to get rid of the seals. And here's what you can do to get rid of them. And if you don't, you will be fined. So I said to Mark, wow. A few months ago, we would have been on 60 Minutes on Sunday night if we touched those seals. But now we're mandated to get rid of them. We can use an airsoft gun, we can, I mean, it's amazing what you can do to get rid of your seals. My real point of all these stories is, we were notified from the city with a letter, just like we were that our dock was up tonight to be talked about. We were never notified about H1 change. And I think we should have been. Had we been notified, we may have said, okay, it's time now to redo our dock that we've been waiting to do until we were sure how exactly we thought it would be best to do it. So we never received proper notification in the first place. And I'm probably in trouble for Mark for getting up here and saying that. But that's, that's a fact. So my very simplistic viewpoint is, how is it so easy to notify on all these other little areas? Charge me, not charge me, seals, no seals. But they can't notify me on something like this that is a huge impact on the value of my home, on the lifestyle that we want to lead and what we've worked for our entire lives. And I'd like you to take that into consideration tonight. Because we are not trying to do anything wrong. We're just trying to maximize what we can, what we thought we purchased. Thank you.
All right, thank you. What was a noticing of this, Chris, by the Harbor Commission?
Notice of this particular meeting?
No, 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 of the change to the harbor policy. Should, should all the dock owners have been communicated with? How would they know?
We didn't send a notice to all the dock owners, but it had been a topic of discussion at a couple different Harbor Commission, actually, many Harbor Commission meetings because the city council directed the Harbor Commission to look at all of the H policies. And at the time, there were five. And so we reviewed H1 policies over about eight or nine months last year.
Okay, all right. Did you want to come forward, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I just, there's a lot of confusion associated with our dock. I want everyone to know that we can put between an 80 and 85-foot boat in the existing dock. And we verified that with Pete Swift before we bought the house. So that's what we thought we bought. And to take that away and tell us we can't do that anymore, that doesn't go over well. And at least some of you appreciate that and understand that's our position. So to say that the reconfiguration of the dock that we'd like to do to make it more accessible for us and our neighbor and to say that we're going out beyond the project line, we can already go out beyond the project line. So let's not confuse the issues. My existing dock, I can fit an 80 to 85-foot boat in there. So all I'm asking you to do is let me reconfigure the dock so it's more usable for my family, my friends, and my neighbors. That's really all I'm asking for you to vote on tonight. Everything else that's been said is confusion in terms of you can go this far beyond the project line. It, it shouldn't even be discussed because I can already do it. So what I'm really asking you to carefully consider, is it fair for you to take away what I thought I bought? Which is to put a boat in that dock as it sits that is 80 to 85-foot large. But if you want to know why there's no big boats down there, and you can see, starting at Lucky Palmer's house, he can put, and he can go well beyond the project line. We will not be the first one that people are going to see as they come around that corner sticking out to the project line. It starts way on up there. Look at the size of Lucky Palmer's lot. His, inside of his slip is at least 23 feet. So he can go well beyond the project line. Why don't you see large boats in there? There's a simple reason. And by the way, I'm on the waiting list for a mooring at Newport Harbor Yacht Club. We don't want to impact our views. So we don't put, none of my neighbors put big boats in there. We paid for a view. We want the view. But we also want full use of our docks because that's also what we paid for. So I would like you to please consider our request to reconfigure our dock to make it more usable for our family, our friends, and our neighbors. That's really what we're here to talk about. And to send us back to Harbor Commission without any direction is really onerous on us. It really is a hardship and I appreciate you for acknowledging that. So we would respectfully request that you give us a vote this evening and you vote a favorable vote based on what the facts really are. Thank you.
And thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back here, close the public hearing. Brad, Mr. Avery.
Well, I was struck by that. I, I agree with Mr. Councilman. He can put an 85-footer there now, of course. But I understand his desire to straighten the dock out. So I think if he straightened the dock out, but it didn't extend further than it is now, the Harbor, the Harbor Commission would have approved that. And he would be able to stick out the same amount and the dock would be straight. So we wouldn't have this issue. I think if the dock went in, even, I'm sure the Harbor Commission would have granted the bit of overage that's there that obviously he did not realize he was over. The dock's over by maybe four feet, the one on the, on the south side. And the other one's over a little bit. He had nothing to do with that. So I think what the Harbor Commission was objecting to is going further, is increasing the length. And as, so as soon as that happens, it sort of changes the dynamic. But if you just take that and you straighten it out, obviously with a new dock and don't go beyond any further than what's there now, I think that would have been acceptable.
Is that what's happening? That you're going beyond that?
He absolutely has the right to put in a, as big a boat as, you know, to stick out, you know, whatever that, whatever the beam is.
These measurements are all very difficult. I think one of Mr. Miller's drawings indicated it was about nine and a half feet out of the length of the finger beyond the pier headline. In the drawing he had where he had the maximum sized boat and all the things.
Well, are you extending the length of the fingers?
We're building a whole new dock. Yes, the length of the fingers is extended.
And that's the only issue here. That is the only issue, is extending the length of the fingers, as far as I can see. So.
The Harbor Commission did not offer any suggestion of a middle ground.
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
And I agree with Mrs. Councilman. I mean, the, the letters and the sea lions and everybody in the council, that whole policy has been difficult. The whole sea lion issue has been very difficult. And it's, it's not easy. These, these dock issues are, are really tough. There's all kinds of constraints that drive people crazy.
All right.
We, we would like a vote tonight. I think Mr. Muldoon is correct, but we'd like the best that you can do.
Mr. Muldoon, did you want to speak?
Yes, I'd like to move to approve the application. And I would accept a second and friendly amendment as to any restrictions that could be placed, practically speaking, on how much any boat for this owner or subsequent owner of the home could protrude. Hopefully, still considering that they do have the right right now to significantly stick out.
I would second that, but I don't have a, I'm not comfortable with the condition yet.
Yet?
Yet. Anyone else?
Does anyone else have a comment? I guess I would say, what they have now to straighten it out, I would like certainly not to exceed the project line. And just to go a minimum, straighten it out and allow to go just a minimum beyond the pier line. I, I guess I haven't heard why they need to go more beyond where they already are. Straighten it out, do all the necessary work, but why isn't that sufficient?
Because of the beam, the width of the dock.
All right, so should we adjust the size of the beam?
Sure.
Well, that's, that's what I sort of requested and I don't want my motion to die without a second. But also.
Well, I second it with a friend, or Mr. Muldoon, or Mr. Duffy. Well, I second it with a friend, or Mr. Duffy, or Duffield, gave a second, but we haven't finalized what that condition is.
The same, I think he should have the same, what he, he looks at the, he should have the same dock that he has here now, built new. And if he can get a wider float, those are, that's great, if there's room for that. But just the same shape and straighten it out and just extend beyond the pier headline, no further than what dock currently does, which it does extend beyond the pier headline. But this is what he purchased and I think should be.
Yes, I agree with that.
That's been my point all along, that we should never take the current dock away, how far it sticks out away from any homeowner.
Just as a point of clarification, that wasn't my motion. My motion was to approve the structure as submitted.
Right.
With restrictions on either how much beam width or how far a boat can protrude for this owner or subsequent owner. It doesn't bother me if, and just to clarify, I'm not bothered that the applicant's pier goes a little bit further past the yellow line than the original pier and I see that's sort of the trend for neighbors as well. So I don't know how to do that and I'm not a boater, quite frankly. But that's, that's my intent and I don't know, Duffy, if you can dig deep, come up with something.
The applicant has said they want to keep the dock the way it is. They don't, I didn't hear anything that they would accept a restriction on the length of the boat. Don't see any eye movement, so.
Let's vote.
You just, you could say restrict the, they can't stick past the red line. Can't go past the red. You could have the same width dock, but the vessel inside the dock would not be allowed to stick past the red project line.
The neighboring owners can stick out beyond it now. There's no question of that. We could stick out beyond it now as he showed before to reconfigure the dock and end up with something lesser. It just doesn't make sense. And so I would respectfully say that I would still support Mr. Muldoon's original motion.
Okay.
At this point, again, for more clarification. So I, again, I have also have no problem with the boat being past the project line, the red line. That's, that's not what I'm getting to. When dredging were to occur, you'd move the boat. What I'm trying to get to is at what point past that red line? Okay, let me just finish my sentence and then, okay. At what point past that red line is it no longer navigable? Is the point that I'm trying to get to?
There's no answer to that.
Sure, there is. It's where we make it to be, Brad.
Well, there's no, yeah, you're asking, but there's no answer.
Well, that's our job. Our job is to answer these questions.
Well, maybe we need to go back to the Harbor Commission to make that.
People are sticking out beyond the, their docks, all different sizes up and down the harbor. Yeah, there's no rule. And you can't get a commitment on a number because it never stays the same.
But the intent of a six to one vote of the Harbor Commission was to rein this back in.
I believe, or to at least maintain what's there.
I would like to propose that we would find it acceptable if a friendly amendment were made that the boat would not extend out beyond 50% of the beam as opposed to the full beam of the boat. That brings it almost.
You got a deal.
That's 10 feet.
Do you want to say?
Wait a minute, with what, extending the dock out as originally?
Oh, is that what you said?
The dock would be its original proposal, but no vessel at this dock would extend more than 50% of the beam beyond the end of the finger.
And it would not exceed the red line?
Probably would exceed the red line by five or six feet rather than 17 feet.
Right.
Comes in about 10.
All right. All right, do you want to capture those words? Just what, did you capture, can someone capture what Mr. Stacy just?
So the boat that will go in that dock could only stick out the width of its, half the width of his beam, half the width of the beam.
And who's going to police that? Catch that?
Well, our new harbor department.
Will they approve the permit?
Yeah, it's, we don't do it now, you know.
We're just going to start.
I thought you were not going to put a boat there. You are going to put a boat there.
No, this is on principle.
Okay. I think we have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote?
Just briefly, we don't have a motion, we don't have a resolution here for approval this evening. So as part of your motion, we'd have to bring back a resolution.
All right, we'll direct staff to come back with a resolution to reflect the motion and the second.
Yeah, if it's approved, we'll bring back a resolution that reflects the intent of the council with the condition.
All right, let's vote.
Mayor Protam? Okay, with councilmembers Avery, Brenner, and Hurdman voting no, the motion carries for three.
All right, let me see where we are. Okay, Madam Clerk.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motion for reconsideration? I see none. We are adjourned for breakfast.